With regard to this bill. Now, the last time we looked into this bill it was 2006. But due to changes that are taking place, we have seen our elderly people being abused by children. We felt that no, there's a need that our elderly people should be protected in a way. That is why we are here to discuss this bill today.
So, ma u mamele gachecheche wa tolu kuti ikonindo esalelenge move. Fanele wena ucho u kuti nishie uku, si kutateke, si kufake, konasi uku okle paralamente and then ku muu ye, ku sekuni, si pinde sukse paralamente ku pasiso yonge lando. Ku ya puma ku 408 channel, ma se si kete yonke ilizu ili. Nje ngoba namplange sisi Ulundi, ngomso sisa upeka eh, eh, Richards Bay and then sizo ya Ehjozini, si kete eh KZN, si pumele Mpumalanga, si sheki she u kuti matina basi Mpumalanga. Abonu kuti machukumeze gakanjani ye ipinto esisi ile. So, niberiti ke umane nimthokoba pa ku 408 channel ez tifinizi inu. Sizo abonu kuti si okla ez isintokota sisi sengapambili azipelili kuti. So, ez isitulosbe kuela pakati, zenzelo abo bandubaza uzisa ukongeza, pezku esislo melu esisa spagamiza.
Since we'll be deliberating on this bill, we are asking you to make inputs and to listen very carefully. If you feel that there is something that we've left out, please make sure that you come here in front, you make your input or suggestion as and when this bill is being processed at parliament up until it becomes a law. You should also be listening and watching on channel 408 on TV as to what is happening with this bill. But at the moment, we are here at Ulundi just to get your inputs. Tomorrow, we'll be going on to Richards Bay, the other day we'll be at Josini and we'll be moving to other provinces such as Mpumalanga and others.
Siakolisa bandaba dalukala bengekangeeni, kodwa si betwalika esha kaluki yonkintwene klasalayo, besenge keswalinde knowing ubu vastness bali area nukuti babu yekte nkanjani. Na se sinisitulobetun, ez ishelo aban.
May you please pardon us for starting whilst some elders have not yet arrived. But due to time constraints, we are forced to start pardoning us on that one.
Twense kanthu nukulekon. Aba yasumnyango kutungene wangapibetun, abasa ngabe besse councili. Izama ba komba nibetuna bangatuka bandaba da, baraita ba bangatuka gankani. Ngoku kesiza unike la u tata uye tu oingosi, asamkele sizo ukuazuku ba emenyemikli mbih. Eh, yo kuti sibeke indo isingisengayu, tata sondela ngapambili. Eh, pezulu ngenkosi eyetu, pezulu?
Pezulu!
We will give over now to our ingosi, ingosi Mulife, to welcome us and give us a brief description of what we are here for.
Siya bonge.
Thank you very much.
Angi tateleli thuba, gi ndulise u bengelela, u slalo uwe komidi.
Let me take this opportunity and greet the chairperson of the committee.
Ummama Umvana. Namalu nga.
That is Honorable Umvana and all the honourable members of the committee.
Genge, ngisababiza ngamaka ama, ngenwa yeskati.
Due to time constraints, I won't name them one by one.
Gi ngabalula nje umama Ushengwa, ngenwa yo kuti, utheku ngagubola. Futisi akbongo kuti i komidi le paralamente, umalizogwenzi umsibenzomule kangaaga, asenzisitlinsa egosoku ti uyafika zozbona galisa endaweni atuniuwe kuiona.
I can just indicate umama Ushengwa, who felt it important that since she's from this area, she decided to be part of us here.
Gi bengelele u chief director na bobonke ama social weka akona e ambisana ne komidi.
Let me also greet the chief director as well as all the social workers that are with the committee.
Na bobonke ge nje aba ingene yalulushelo lusuglo namplange olbalege kangaaga.
And all those who are part of today's program, which is a very important one.
Gi zonndulisa u bengelela okhulu kubazalibetu abatwele kulechamba namplange.
Let me also pass my greetings to all our parents who are here today in this chamber.
Lonage okhulumayo nje ngobe se shilo umxonishwa uslalo uwe portfolio. Ingosi yesizwe sagwa Mulife, konakonala kuamakheluwa nje Enmutu, kodwa olapha ngoktunua yindlu ya makosi kuzwelonke.
Speaking here is ingosi Mulife, who is just around, he's from Enmutu. He is here because he has been sent by the House of the Traditional Leaders.
Siakbonga, slalo uwe komidi, umxonishwa Umvana, uguenzisitlinsa egosoku ti umagiogwenzi umsibenzzi e balegile yesizwe ni tuniuwe ibona abantu. Ni lenze ithuba lugu ti sakiuso kosi siba ingene yumsibenzzi miljenge alena esibugayo.
We are grateful, Chairperson Umvana, that when you are being sent to do such an important work for the people, you also recognize the House of Traditional Leadership.
Sizwa si tokozeka khulu namplange slalo, ngoba sisindlu ngulu ya kuitu la kushala konakunomtebe kuitu.
We feel very much honoured today, Chairperson, because we are here in this legislature.
Bazalibami siyanbongela u kuti uhulumeni use sondelile etu zane guenu. Ugzo nigeza ithuba lugu ti kube konakuxlenghalengiswala ognenzeka konakuma si konistingongo ngokbona guenu. Kumthethos vivinyolo otinta nina utobo.
My beautiful parents, I really feel honoured to indicate to you that you have been given an opportunity to contribute to this bill. But if you feel that there should be any amendments in this bill, you are allowed to do so.
Guxegi ukbwa ngapansi kuhulumeni osenza isitlinsa egoku ti imthetho aishaya yo aguyilonaji, imthetho layo esuge lagiena ekanda nomikabangi ngwake. Guenza isitlinsa egosoku ti azotinda bandabatonde nena yo uguzi babe ingene yalomthetho.
It is good to be led by such a government that makes sure that whenever it enacts laws, it involves its people. It's not just a government that would take its own decisions and make laws without consulting its subjects.
Galau umaka mama fishane ni namgelegile lapha kule legislature, umxonishwa umama Umvana. Na ilonke itimba nsuka nalukuzwelonke, na bobonke abakona lapha ngapakati namgelegile nginesitlinsa egosoku ti intonipo engibona yuzogwenzi kuti sbambisane ku se kfige kwineni.
You are all welcomed in brief. Chairperson, I welcome you with your entire team. I believe that the respect that I see here will lead us to a positive conclusion of this gathering. Thank you.
Engosi mta nomxe, dia fake umamushengwa aputinda bezit.
Thank you very much, ingosi.
Sa se si ti followsoot on that.
So, ngasoschiinda bezit.
I'm sure members of the Portfolio Committee, fanele simbonge u deputy minister ubaba Unamashé. Ngoba nasekaye Eastern Cape bebe konakabantaba bu yakunjungulu, kui House of Traditional Leaders, ingosi sen.
I believe that we should also be grateful to Honorable Member Unamashé, who has made it a point that we interact with the House of Traditional Leadership. Because even where we come from, they were present and even now, we still have them.
And they were given instructions by the deputy minister to be present with us in all these public hearings. Ba tulege isalule ego, gui pe ne ligangono shewuti, babe na tukue yonke imshanganu yetu. Nje ngoba sisa zuku ti indo ez ningi amakosi eyetu, kanyingosi zetu, zi fanele u kuti zazi, uba guenza gelani zigone u kubizimbizwa nyana emakaya.
As we are aware, that the House of Traditional Leadership need to know as to what is happening in their constituencies, so that they will also be able to call their own invizos and make inputs on that.
Siyatokozage ngalo, ngalo go, go sia.
We are very much grateful about that, ingosi.
Singa kange si kiti kasheli, ndje ngoba stembisili ba ngakesmambani, andhaske nguknomitivi asbonana, asinomile ape bu myameni?
Without any waste of time, as I've indicated, we shouldn't waste a lot of time here. But I'm not sure as to whether the television is able to see us since we are in this dark hall.
Smiling in this dark? Na ishile ndabukngoma.
The issue of smiling is important even in this darkness.
Okay, si nikia izage ngoku umama umxonicha umxongo, not Ushengwa this time around, umama umxongo. A young woman u kuti asitela taka, u kuti kanti kanti esislo melu omthetho sizenga so sitini, so that ni konne ge nguknina u kupinda nongezelele ge sisi ile izindo.
We are now handing over to Mama Umxongo, not Mama Ushengwa, who is going to summarize for us as to what this bill is all about. From there, it will be your turn then to make your own inputs.
Ilondo ge kuza u fanele kauza ngapambili, uzi cho ikamalako, uzi cho u kutubu yapi, ucho uba uyakasa le pil sizenga yo okanyu yakasa.
That is why therefore it is important that when you come here in front, you need to indicate as to who you are, that is your name, your same name, where you come from. And the most important thing is for you to indicate as to whether you support or you do not support the bill.
Mama umxongo, siti, ma si nikile kuasisi.
Over to you, Honorable Umxongo.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Ni bongaga kulu uslalo.
As the Chairperson said earlier on, that we are here as the Portfolio Committee on Social Development to hear your views and to listen to you.
Nje ngoba ge uslalo se shilo ngapambili nukuti tinasisela, u kuti suzozo imbono yenu, nukuti silalele nina, nama sizwe nina, u kuti nitini.
I believe you already have the bill. Those that mobilized you to come here explained it to you and told you what is it that you are here for. So I hope you are ready for your inputs.
Ngiatemba, u kuti le pil nama lumthethos vivinyo singe na utola, kanti futige nala abo aban ukuzele u kuti nize lapha. Nabobanchelile gafupi, u kutige lumthethos vivinyo umae la nanani, manje tinoweyetu, u kuti sizwe nina, u kuti i kalelele uwe nyu leti.
This bill seeks to amend the Older Persons Act number 13 of 2006 to address the implementation challenges.
Manje ge lumthetho, uzama u kuti ulungi se omthetho omdalala wa 2006. Omthetho ge wabadaala u kuti ubugo u kuti pela, kubane kibielo nukuti uyalandeluwa futi.
It seeks to insert new definitions and new provisions relating to the monitoring and evaluation of all services to older persons.
Ufunakuti ge ufa ge izi kibielo ezincha, futi uzame nukuti ubonu kuti u logo kubizo u kuti in monitoring and evaluation, uka panopega u kutige lumthetho uyalandeluwa ngentela fanele.
Also to make provision for the removal of older persons to the temporarily safe care without a court order.
Nukuti ge upege pelu kuti, umaguenza gaban dabadala basusuwa lababe wekonakweskashana, afane langa kubeni court order. Etu lumthothumdalala uzasusuwa lapha kweni skashana, fanele kubeni court order. Kodwa ufuna guenza kuti kubeluwa u thumthumdalala susuwa lapha.
To also tighten up the existing implementation and compliance measures to affect some textual amendments for greater clarity.
Uzama ge u kuti ulungi se futi nala poknapala ngakona uguzi, si kuazipelu kuti kukatriga ashle logo ngakratanga.
The bill also seeks to address the gaps that were identified in the Older Persons Act and its implementation.
Lumthetho futige ufuna u glungi sa, izindo besse ngapale ganga ashle nama kula makbe akona emthetwene omdalala, emthetwene omkhulu waban dabadala.
It seeks to address the following challenges: the lack of coordination between government to deliver services for older persons.
Uzama ge u glungi se kuti pela, nje ngoba uhulumeni ngesinska tu benga nikesi ngesinzisa, nama benga nikesi eli ngesinzise bandu inabadala. Manje lumthetho umukujie lo uguenzige u kutige aban dabadala bazutolele zoinzisa.
It also seeks to address the non-inclusion in the act of the valuable role older persons play in their families in terms of passing knowledge and wisdom to the younger generations.
Uzama ge futi lumthetho umushu kuti ukutaze pelu kuti.
Uzama ge futi lo mteeto umushukuti ukutaze pelukuti abandabadalaba kubeghe no ukulisela uloazi ubazukubabo no ma ebantwinabadal.
It also seeks to address the lack of legal provision for older persons to the capacitated and non-communable diseases.
Kunezi foke estatelanayo, manje kelo mteotosvinyo uzama ukutige abandabadalabanga fulilelegi gulezi foke estatelanayo galula.
The lack of legal provision for services to older persons with disabilities and chronic illness.
Ukutige la aboge abapila nokubazege na laboge abanezi foke esbisukutige ama chronic illnesses na abo ufanelege bapege lelege batole ukfige lela ngasosonkiska.
It also seeks to address the lack of proper monitoring and registration of community-based care centers or services and residential facilities.
Lo mteeto ge ufunukutige laba ababizo ukutige ama healthcare-based workers na abo bapali swepela babo mgenegorechista bazuwa zukuti bazenga ngoksemetwene ukuzi bazuwa zuge ukuneta bandabadal.
I must say, if social development is here, yesterday I learnt that there are some NPOs where the elderly use their whole grant when staying in that particular home-based case, so this bill seeks to address such challenges.
Izolo ge ngizwile ukutikukona ma NPOs avelenja itate yonkimali yo abandabadalaba nige ngishonogane manje kelo mteotosvinyo uzama ukuti ulungisintezincha ngalezo.
It also seeks to address the lack of legal provision for training of caregivers providing frail service delivery, frail care services, sorry.
Lo mteotosvinyo ge ufuna futi no ukutikubesa emtetwene ukuti labantu labage aban pilo entenga entenga yo bo nabatolege umnedo ukutige laba baba ngata ibapali swepela ngoksemetwene.
It also seeks to address the lack of legal provision for the removal of older persons to temporarily safe care resulting in older persons continuing staying with the abusers in cases where they have no alternative accommodation.
Uzama ge no ukuti lo mteeto ufige le abandabadalukuti laba shelikonoma ngabe bashukumezege fanele kubenentle ukutige basusuze no ma ukuti lo oshukumeza yo ukusuze ye na omumtomdalala angasuswa e ndawe niaki.
It also seeks to address the gaps in bringing the alleged abuser before a magistrate as a result cases of abuse of older persons are always thrown out of court due to lack of evidence.
Genzege ge ngesinska tu tole ukuti lo oshukumeza yo umage ayu tatwa abiwa emtetwene eskati nesningu tole gitinkandole ivamsukutige ipkite lobofarazi ilkite lelo kala nganwa ukutikfarazi psikabungea. Manje kelo mteotosvinyo uzo uzama ukuti ulvale lelo kebe lo ukuti lo oshukumeza yo ekwineni atola galane kala lokshukumezo umtomdalala.
It also seeks to address the lack of legal definition for physical abuse. Older people are not protected from certain unlawful activities that constitute physical abuse.
Lo mteotosvinyo ge uzama ukaza leka malili no ma ge ifraizektiwa physical abuse ukshukumezo umuntu ngomzi mbak, ukutige ufanele konda galu ukutidi shuktini. Manje ge ufanele futi omumtomdalala avielege ulogokshukumezege.
And lastly, it seeks to address the gaps in terms of empowering a clerk of the court or registrar to provide the magistrate with the details of an offender.
Ugunyeke ogwenziwa lo mteotosvinyo ukuti ishomisa uno pala wasinkandolo sngatitlak of the court ukutige aganigeze pela imanti imniningwane ya lumuntu oshukumeza umumtomdalala.
This bill seeks to address all that I've mentioned above.
Lo mteotosvinyo ge uzama ugulungisa gonke logose nguxilo ngentha.
As I said earlier on, we are here to get your views on the bill.
Nje ngoba ge ngixilo kale no ukutitinawetu ukutistolege uvulueno ngalo mteotosvinyo.
We are here to listen to you as the Chair has spoken, that most of the time that we have is time to listen to all of you.
Sizela page ukuti suzola lela nina nje ngoba ge uslalo besa kshilo logo ngakoge tina ukutukuti silalele nina.
So that going back to parliament, we then consider all your submissions that you've made here today.
Ukuzeghe umasasbu yelage parame nde tina sizo tata gonke logonukshilo sitige umasfigale parame nde besa slala pansige siyakubungula.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Ni bo ngakuluslalo.
Siabonga umshonicha umusté umshongo.
Thank you very much, Honorable umshongo.
Ngoku kutwa mandazisa indoba i toilets za bandu abango tata ezila ezansi azisibensi ufanele bapege first floor ukwenzelukuti basibensi sezona.
Now I am informed that I should inform you that male toilets are not functioning properly. They are therefore requested that whenever they feel pressed, they must go to first floor.
Ukunye kutwa masiku tele kukuba kuyazanywa ukangelwa i backup, i generator, ezosnitis ngoba iku i load shedding, ikuha zukutisbonani.
Another thing that I'm requested to inform you is that due to load shedding, we... they are still organizing the generator so that there should be lights and for us to be able to see one another.
Kotwa i TV aimanga yona ya kumbekeka u sitata nje ngoba skila.
But the television continues to record us as we are talking.
Yay, ayi abakopula lenta va ye TV.
The issue of the TV, the TV makes them laugh.
Iyo. Ngoku ukke indweziza wienza. Nje ngoba sisicho indoba naa ngokuke omteeto sishomela siza nao. Bazali, I know abazu kulude tu siyabe saaba.
Parents, since we are dealing with this bill, I'm very much aware that we are afraid of our grandchildren.
Genlela esbasabanga yo yenzu ukuti singa konukuvula even i case ngabo sibaba upise baxale stokesi.
The way we love them so much, it makes even difficult for us to open cases against them if they abuse us.
Ngaleko ukba tanga, but ngoku be saaba.
In the name of love, but we are afraid of them.
Nje ngoba Honorable umshongo echo ukuti izolo ebemangele to hear that in the old-age homes that have been established, ama NPOs, ama NGOs, even the ones that are subsidized imholo abo abandabadalutata wonke ngasali ngichu fifty rand.
As Honorable umshongo has already indicated, that yesterday we heard that some of the NPOs and some of the government institutions, whenever the elderly people get their money, meaning those parents who stay in these old-age homes, their money is taken, they end up with nothing.
Lo mteeto sishomelo ge ulungi sindwezinja alo sifunukuti indaba ye flat rate in all old-age home centers. Ifanaani, at least umda kontola no ba hundred rand change, okani fifty rand change, just to buy sweets and a time.
This bill seeks to address such things, you know, ukuti umtomdalala ogne naani guo wonke lama old-age centers, kubene flat rate, imale vulenyan e vuvu ne lwananga ukuti, ogne naani umtomdalala gasali ngisho no ma ye hundred rand, no ma ye fifty rand, ukuzepela naya wasukuti azijablisengala wa no ma yi na fungu iten.
Ukunye oku esigoo esigutolileyo the time, Honorable Stock sitige leza wezni countries. Si fumanisayukuti lo mteeto ukutikfane lu fumane i court order before umtomdalu umsuse from apo alshukumezege kona ufanele at least no goona su trimega ngane. Umtomdalu uyalshukumezege sibene right endo wi social workers if si recommended ukutatatwe aswe hong ya mkelegelondo ngafanele slindi court order etatu nyaga wonke ukprosesa lendo yuktatuwa kwake gota siyambonukuti yapelakabazu kulu.
As we've been moving around the world, Honorable Stock, we've also learnt that, you know, the issue of the protection order is delaying us here in South Africa. We are therefore proposing that if we see that this elderly person is being abused severely, we don't have to wait for a court order, but we should make it a point that we remove the parent and protector, then the issue of this protection order, we are proposing that it should be removed altogether.
Just to relate a short story, only last week, where a lady reported to me wa, "Kuno koko in front yapa efrente kaya abo oshunguwa umlo mo umzukulu because of the drugs."
Unkotala nje ingane wa ne kuno mama ge uskotala ukutu kuno makeluwa no wake otulage lege esee mge onoma nganyuluwa umlo mo anganyuluwa umzukulu nganwa yitaga mizwa.
Lo koko uyesaba uyo mbopisumduan utumdanomduan amgeke. Wasewakuluma wati ushayege ile samue wasewashusige.
The granny is afraid to go and open the case against the grandchild. She even went to a stand of saying, "I'm not going to report my grandchild." She made up a story that she pumped the wall.
Sizindo ke ezipshungu ezo esifumanukuti lo mteeto sishomelo ma uboka ne uchonga nenezo zindo sinyanzeleke indoba ma uka makeluane ubonukuti lumtu akachela ngakache ukoko apo kanyo mkulu sikona ukuba mteeto, that is the social development, uripote ma uripote kuwe bakawleze quickly bamususe lumtu if they do have space in the center.
These are the things that this bill is trying to address. As a neighbour, if you happen to notice that your neighbour is being abused, we must try by all means to assist. The social workers should intervene as quickly as possible in saving umumtomdalala in that particular situation.
Benjiti ke mandzame uku katrisa further than that, wenzelukuti by the time se abantu besa ngapambili ngoba I want si izandala imnyamin because abantu nguka badala fanele bapakamisi izandla mabefunuza ngapambili usachurity uzo babeka istika seswini bazu ukono kuza andazge ukuti iabonakalia dileya indaba ye generator. Mara sfanele sibepatient because maybe kange sifumaneka leka leka the exact time ye load shedding so that is zetu sibeghe genlela.
Benkala ukuti sisa lindi leje sekubege gota yubanzima ukuti abantu sibabone abaparamisi izandla. Gotoa ge ogne naani asikubege ne sizo bonukuti sindsaranja nese akoli sa ektenige iskatsi low shedding asisa zanga raashé ina wugelumsebinzu yechususha isana ge nale skatisi low shedding.
Sikule ndaba ke ngoku ukuti sikale kuwe kalali ngapo. Mikela le light bati bazai chigalezi sisa sboni ukuti umtopakamisi izandla ozo ukona uzo ngenzelela ukuti ikoninda ba ishege. Rotetani sizenya ngapa ngase.
May you turn the light towards my left so that we'll be able to see people who raise hands.
Yambonu baba na sisa izandla sakwa oza baba ngapambili. Isa baba chigalezi si light kaluke as you promised. Ukono mnyapakamisi layo ngapa kuwetala? Isa mama. Kona munye ngapa if anboni ngapo ngetzeni? Naa ngo munye pa ekwineni onbe indo mshop. Isa, isa anboni, oh naa ngia, isa, isa ngapambila. Bapelele ngapa ne? Maslighta ngapa ya naa sisi izandla? Security, bring that one that you see. Sikubi, oh oza ma ekwineni kapabizpезulu. Basapelele ngabo. Asikale ngabo ke and then bo na ge sisa baniga sa just ukono koyo ngabo? Bring him or her magesa ngapambili. Siyazukutiske telephona ngabo. Si vumela neke ngeskatesi skulumayo eh? If utvili shindoba indoyako from the group oisava yo okanyo from the old-age center, indega kulu, you can't finish it. We sala paya kulatafileyo kwe tesa, we submit epayan. Siyamkelega ukuti ezinye ngasi ngaspalanga ekaya, siye uzbala and submit them ngali. Naa ankulinti wekula kona epakamisa the white thing, naaba abanyo ngapo yoli ba kona ngabo. Sinika only five minutes, goto ma ukono thirty-three minutes ngavyaga kulu so that abandabadalabazu ukululega bahampi.
Let us agree on timeframes now. Umumtomdalu zalanga ngapambili is given only five minutes. Gotoa ge umakona nje ukutiskatanga sibinsala shé, angsibinzisa imzuzu emi tatu. Uma ngabe ge umutu kona loga appalile setamaritin submission, we atreloa ukuti anigeze ono pala abakona la ukona nosisi usislindiwe oparamisi paper, ni atreloa ukuti ni nigeze bo na. Niabo.
Sinikeza wenake tata? Makendi bo ni bapi abantu besign language? Ufigile ngoku? Oh balapenfaku etu, okay. Pitelisa insan kaluku izandla nemino ditun. Twelve languages were assigned by the president two weeks back, so siné languages ezhi twelve uke instead of eleven. So fanele be kona siyatanda astand and baboni ngoku benza apapesuluon? Bapi nyelisa apapesulu? Obane camera yabo? All right, paya veleti vin, are they aware? Okay.
Sanbonani.
Greetings.
Oh ame.
Hooray.
Sanbonani.
Sanbona baba.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Si ngiyabonga kakulu ukfigala anukfiga futi.
I'm very thankful for being here and it's also my first time here.
Ogungjablisayo. Iguti ngibonage ismanga sukuti senge kona eparamende.
What makes me happy is that I'm amazed at the fact that I'm actually in parliament.
Senboha ukutige e ginokisimus manje about seventy-seven ungulunkulangi pe bo na.
I think I'm also grateful of the fact that I have spent about seventy-seven Christmases that God has gifted me with.
Intlosa ame ge enjablisayo kune complainte enzo isho nje ngama.
The, my main aim that makes me happy on the complaint I'm just about to say.
Kune ndela la etin tina nje ngaba bandabadalasizwiso ispi sholo sasengayazi lendo yoki shoa ukuti kumelisfamis vaga shiswe sikala goto ngomilalo sikala nje ngomilalo.
There's a thing that we as black people were never used to the fact that we should be taken out, go visit other areas, but we start this with playing.
Ya ngiyabonga kakulu ukutsenglabila goto nje ngama.
I'm very thankful, but I'm already hungry as we speak.
Ama social way to. eh, amasocial we tu, amasocial weke etu eshamba nao, aspataga kale.
Uh, the social workers that we work with treat us very well.
Inkina yituke, seni beka ge manje, seni kala pekwa.
Our problem, I'm going to go straight to the problem.
Eh, number one, na sakingina ya, lapana emlalweni inlela enzizwa, esizizwa sanga kulue kikale ngayo. Yele na yuki, oma seni lalile lapaya, mlampe wa pumu number one. Kui ndemna ndigale. And then wa pumu number two, kobe na nde inloso yuki nipalisama size, lapo. Ekne, besa pumu kutu asahambi, uegulelozo, niyo lala konan, labo size bam. Masabepumile bayakban.
The issue I have is that with the games that we go to, we go and we play, you might get maybe position one and position two, and your sizes would be taken. But uh, when it, the, the time comes that you should be going somewhere else or in another country to go and play the same games, that never happens. Now I would like to know where do those sizes? Because they would have come out by then, where do they go?
Ya, uchega kulu loko, insholo kusutu ge, i, i pusu ge manje, eh, ele start.
The third point would be?
Eh, intransporte etu, oma sizo hamba. Asinzizwa nje, sikululega sisi siyahamba.
Uh, the transport that we use when we take these trips, we really do not feel free, uh, like we are actually touring.
Si swaspetu mpaago, siyahala lapaya. Mlampe ngaza kobe ngalewa mahola. Utortin transporte, ayu afi, klo ktwen, yes, yes. Ne tasta lapasi ilunsile ne, incha bezetu sini. Eh, sastelu i tasta la.
Uh, we would spend quite a lot of time waiting for our transport. You'd find that we have with us our food and it would take a couple of hours whilst we are waiting for our, our, our transport and then we would be dusty, whereas we had actually prepared ourselves, trimmed our beards and everything.
Um, sanbo kaka.
As I conclude.
Eh, number four, ya tolisana yukushu kuti, kuna lenlela ngaza wati, uzo zo wati ngampinda.
Uh, I do apologize, it may sound like I'm repeating it.
Si sugesa zukuti sizo hamba, je ngapemet ye etu. Sislosile yuki sisi zo kwenza loko. Eh, oh, lapani ya tolisana ya tolisana, sol, 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 sol. Sol, sol, ya tolisana.
Uh, I do apologize for that.
Aliti leli pusu, lel transporte, ililele ebenzoso kulu kutu. Ungako slopeka njalo lapaya, bayazutuma usumdaala, awo shesekol.
Uh, uh, this was also on the transport issue, that's why we get robbed over there. They know that if you have aged, you'll probably forget very soon.
Benkonde uki ge, sisa zvulumpava suhle, sipinde sialape.
I actually, I actually meant that we end up having to open our lunchboxes, eat them, uh, and still wait because the transport would not have arrived by then.
Baba, umpago lo, dalasihula upele ne, masijulele kwenye point.
Um, lapage, senzi senya tri na u, lapo u point one, siyangsheshi sumama lapo.
I have to finish, I'm being rushed by the lady.
Iko senzo kolchwanje.
That's why I will forget.
Eh, lapana seniti i pusu, number five, ngoba sifelosi ngaktet, niyangsheshi sana nzer, kwenzo shayofalo, ngakuwa zukulu mama.
Uh, now we're on point number five, you are rushing me so that I'd be afraid and I would not be able to speak.
Isakiwo ze etu lapaya. Utolukushu kutu, asina azisakiwo, inobo la hilanga na konan, la esenza konani, mesebenzi etu, ye zala.
We, we do not have infrastructure where we could come, come together and meet and um, do things like craft work, we do not such, do not have such structures.
Um, nyukchabela gakuluma ngabe, yobanu ti ngiyakalu kufiga la i paramende. Kobe nomeshluwa uki, aniskolchi siloku nisenzoo popa nje, niti, oh mkulu noko.
I'd be happy, as I stated, that it was the first time that I'm here in parliament. I'd be happy if it turns out to be actually true. Not that you are just toying with us, um, making us sort of like toying with us.
Bobo gakulu kosibena.
Uh, thank you very much, may God be with you.
Siabongwa baba, uka phone ela abantu anuba buzu yafeleti vinina.
You can call your kids and ask them if they saw your TV.
Yakoli sa uki ndukchakhile koto, izinzo zako baba? Izinzo zako, uka ngenisa kulo, kula, kula, kule tafuli.
I do apologize for rushing you, you can take some of your submissions to the table next to you.
Eh, mokel misangan.
Uh, greetings to the meeting.
Inengi nga ingan.
I have a problem with the child. He or she has sold everything that I own. I only am left with what you can see right in front of you. They are smoking drugs or crack.
Gu ma nde ndo ta yifiga inbo la, lala lapante, ibule di wind.
Uh, as we speak, he broke the window, we have to sleep outside.
Seni shuliya gilimbela hiyo. Omba ngayi mashon, ngao report, hamba na yo, na iseti ayiteli. Uh, zanga ba fige, ba beti ba zufi. Ngashala, ngayi ma kutu, inba fige ma kutu, na ba ngayi fige, ba tholeni bayi shai, bayi shala na. Gu ma nde ndo sabi ngomiti, ngomiti ba yiwind, enkubonja kozita, akulutongi imi yobanu imi.
I have actually given up, I have gone to um, the committees, uh, the police, and they, they, they said they would come, they haven't come as yet. As you can see, I have nothing, I am as you see me here.
Ngashala no babu yaku, lu baba wa.
I, I live with the child's father who is not well.
Impukukuwa, wa, tata gonke, umayti, ngupet, ngenakweskami, ngamba nao, seni ngaba ngupet.
The child would take uh, the, the, the father's tobacco, uh, which now means I would have to carry it with me everywhere I go just to make sure that it's safe. Thank you.
All right, ok, mama, is social worker, sibi social worker magespa gama isbonu ngabantu? Zib. Eh, ben tes kalela, nizizola. Mama, auschongo kutu nganu, uya kuipinda u, so that is kangeli social worker yako apu.
I come and inda utkamagiono mama, so wazukpe kutu, is social worker.
Kupi? Kotamile dumisa, kala zondela.
Kotamile dumisa is the name from Zondela.
Ipi, i, is social worker yako, lenda uyako, my paga misizandla batu.
A social worker from Zondela, if we have one here?
Sikala mama ongenela, apekoni, ongeneno mama, utate inkuka kaza ke, ucheki shen ndo uzagwenza kanchan, nganab, nganab. Aunt Ifa. Oh. Uza ubu yake, social worker ustalela uzagwenza, ninga longaki. All social workers must listen carefully and take challenges. Umtu zomala, masestere yo onkelend. Asale uki, what is it that we are going to do?
Sisalakoso, tala kasebalale, sise kache, ngoba umuntu zautolitu, ba luku tapinda buye, azoskaze luki ge ngesnginga sezwi le kubantu, baglenda wasabenzelagiona, uzo legelela kanchan.
Bantu abatala sanu koswa kaluku kuti nicho, uba niyahamba ne, niyakasa okanya, niyakasa, do you support okanya, you don't support? Long Teto sivivi nisize now.
Please do not forget to state whether you support or you do not support the bill that we are here about.
Uwe dat.
Eh, ngalubinga dedi paramende. Eh, kuoyonki ndo, long Teto lona, sibongwa gakulu siyahakasa kuti ngakuwa zukfu yake tintoizwe la gitu kutu, siti.
Let me greet parliament and also state that we support this bill very much and we are thankful that you have actually come to us to hear our views on it.
Lona gokuluma yupe izilo, omkonza, ngkamga maspala, uwa bakulusu kote ndaweni asemo ndo?
Uh, speaking is Bezel Mkonza from Abakulu Simunicipality from the area of Mount Top.
Ngalukala ngalo kuko skatazaga kulu, uki imali etu omholo, stela uki ibuyeli, besekpele nguinyanga, abingeni nyanga, elandela.
Uh, we would, I would like to start with the issue of our pension monies. The date should go back to being at the end of the month. It should not be, it should not cross over to the new month.
Loko kuslima zengo, uki abanyaba ne insurance, i, amatebito ta nomai ini, ku ya pasa mseka, njegama njegu apa pasa mseka, na abanyebitu.
That affects us in, in a sense that if you have debit orders or insurances, those will get disturbed as it has happened to me.
Eh, abantu mekona, ngalapenka ngakona, bakalemo, kutu, ustale kutu lapago maspala, ipachi eti omkulu noko oko, ai pegue ibo oko, nomkulu ngafa wa makance lapagat.
Uh, they, those who sent me suggested that the budget that is um, directed to elderly people should be looked at and examined by the elderly people. It should not involve councillors in it.
Eh, sikshiso loko, ngoba inte nin ngasi binazo, njegu entezo klala, no ku, njegu basi sugue filiti, ye kana sikala uki ya manje, lapaga, ngakona abantu bakula, ba nezi fe, ningani, ngabe sitolilu uki ntilili.
We say that because um, we do not get a lot of things. As we are coming from filiti, we only started eating here. If we had our own money, we could have uh, ensured that we get something to eat on the way.
Beske la uki lapenda, unyekla asemo, nesala konan, nomasangakulu, nama social worker, basensele, inda uyo kala abantu batala, ngoba ma ongenemzini, abantu pasfiko oko, munyo ngakuwa zungshu ipusu samanzo, munyo ngakuwa zungshu kala mpeti ni, ku ilhasu, inkina, inkina.
We would request that um, in the area of Mount Low, they build us an old age home. Because if you go around uh, in people's houses, you can find an elderly person who is not able to even get themselves water and that is quite a big problem.
Inda uze sikhonzi leke, nomasangakulu, nama social worker, kote inda uze siboni.
We have actually identified a piece of land, even though we have not discussed it with the social workers, but the land has been identified.
Eh, sikala ke uki, eh, gulo kuwa ma, oh, senkubali, oh, kunyeka senzo kuyege la, ngoba, uba valo kulume kala ba tubielas, pumenda we ne yoto na, uki asazananga, njegu kutu na ekona beklobi.
I will leave some of the stuff because Mr. Biela who just spoke now, we actually come from the uh, same area, we just did not know that he was going to speak as well.
Eh, ay, senka luku umala.
I would like to stop there, thank you.
Nyabingelela.
Greetings.
Aninabapat.
Greetings to the community and my leaders.
Eh, ngizo, eh, okunzo kuluma la, eh, ngiyabongwa gakulu, uki namge ngize, paramende seni ku kere nganga, seni zo ye, eh, eh, kotini, koto je, kneni besa ngasae, paramende ngiyabonga, eh, muzelela.
I appreciate the fact that I've, at last, I found the opportunity to come to parliament, even though my last days are nearer.
Eh, gisi, intanganawe etu, i, i, Bamba Nani, ematayini.
Our organization is Bamba Nani et Matayini.
Eh, spatera gabie ndawenetu, lapasitis tanganakona, sitisbegili zinzo zetu, ifiga mapala, afiga akwagese, a, a tate, eh, a, 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 a talile gale, eh, lapenda we neta, pesitso ezra konan. Eh, nabasniga zakona, eh, bayafiga ba luka na, a, a, mapala apa akwagesa tate.
We are not treated well where we stay. The paras would always come and vandalize our area and take eh, our things.
Sesi kbegile, mapo ise negota aszagale.
We've reported the matter to the police, but we do not get any form of assistance.
Ma jeje, bastatele i uchocho, ueto, aswela.
Recently, they have stolen our jojo.
Uya skatazaga gakulu, eh, na, angubige je loko, eh, okuspataga bige nasimaka etu sengoko oko, eh, mina angsen ababantwa na, je zibeha meba pela, eh, seni selenje ngshena, abantwa ba tatu pela. Eh, ngiyakwaza ega, ngani, agnatuilete, ngiazimbele tuilete, ba nganela abantu na, ngaboga zimbele tuilete, ripinde di tuale, tugebeke, eh, angsa konani majamanje uki ngizimbele, lona.
Uh, another problem that worries me the most is the fact that I do not have a toilet. Uh, the toilet that I use is a pit toilet, but sometimes it gets full. Now I don't have someone to dig for me, the pit toilet. I therefore request for some form of assistance in that regard.
Benkela again, amen pagati, agnawa bani, kosbosis.
That's my request, I don't have a lot, may God bless.
Mamu, yakasa le, sisi.
Yeah, yakasa.
Okay, uba nu mama buya kupi, upuka ebawa ku.
Eh, uba nwenamama?
Um, mena, tanthi ntoonda, ndaweniasemtoni.
Uba ni mama?
Tanthi ni toonda.
Oh, tanthi ni toonda?
Yeah.
Wa kupi?
Emtoni.
Emtoni, manje ge mama, is social worker yakuwa.
Kuku upemtoni, uyabo zu mama musenga, kuku upemtoni. Ma usuke ematayini. Epongolo. Epongolo. Yeah. Okay. All right, man.
So, is social worker yakuwa nu?
Is social worker konan asututu. Is social worker wasentho?
Ah, paramisizandla lapo.
Ya, Zondela kuie ma, baba, yakuie tata. Social worker, go to her. And then utate inkuka kaza and everything yaki. Uzo iriferu, lenda u efanele iriferu yon. Uxelipuma. Umteko. Social worker, she, sha. Na baba, is social worker. All right, masizole beitu. Kweze kanika tiyakula leichungu. All right, tetage ma.
Eh, mbingelele, onomoswaga Mlalose, Emontle Matrasine Wat 16, imbu ya xuma sake, i warumia si Wat 16.
Uh, greetings, my name is Nomza.
Mlalose.
Mlalose, from?
Wat 16 Emontle.
From Wat 16 et Monlo.
Xuma sake, i warumia ku. Xukuma sake.
Xukuma sake.
Warum.
That's the warum.
Yes. Eh, ngibingelele, shuti, um, paramiso uki, ngia usega Umteto, okulunya ngao. Siné challenge.
I support the bill.
Eh, i challenge esnayo, eh, ezhi i, i warum, siyawatola my cases, oko oko.
The challenge that we are facing as warum, we do get eh, cases of elderly people.
Oko oko esnabo, basala ngabotwana, mabebuya imhulu inba akwagese.
Eh, the elderly people that we have, in most cases, they stay alone. Now, when they are from getting their pension money, you find that all the time they will be butlers.
So, sikesa ingenedela gesakmana no social worker, o social worker vaspendula uki, inkina abanayo, inda wo, i, espesila, tino kono, abatabatala, espeses konan esabomku. Oko oko, sektoele.
Uh, we tried to involve the social workers. We identified the place, but the social workers responded that the place that they have to keep the elderly people, at the moment, the one that is available is for the grandfathers. For the grandees, they don't have a space.
So, in, indo, esit, iskibositati le ezhi i warum, sisebenzo tinjalo si visite, oko oko, sobachi kutu basa kale, sikandena no telle luki sisebenzi tele, ama, nandotu ama CWP, la baba ngakuwa zukuita, ndentsho sisebeni eskota, si fos, tata ama CWP, swaisela puzawazu ksisza, oko oko.
In trying to solve the problem, we've decided to come up with a solution of visiting the grandees and also to involve the CWP to assist.
Askis, askis kagnani, letafula leli, beken doni, lenga suswa, kobe kwezitulolo lapaya. Lindi? Susan letafile, bekwezitulolo against that eh. Baba, isao oko ngabo. Baba o, ya, mse ngabo, fakanisitulolo lapaya. Tatanu wanche, nibeni beka batu. Oh, uzo tetu kok. Uzo kuluma?
Uzo kuluma kok?
Oh, oh, no, agaza ngazokuluma, mbeki lapaya.
Oh, menang, ngachuse la ini.
Ha, umatote. Mto mtala nimshisa nimnyusa. All right, kubeka kakis.
Yeah, bo, nyabonga. So, in the sense, eh, sestala ama CWP, kwasukoke nela, okoko, lababatala ngabotwan. So, sense, i isba visit eh, ezii warum, okchecko kuti basaraitin.
So, in trying to solve this problem, we usually request the CWP's to look after our grandparents and also make sure that we visit them from time to time.
Umtezo nyosapota kakulu, ngoba, kumanje guno mama okishelu impala ngapande, wajigaelo omkipile uko, wahamba weyengantoluko, kumanje yantanta, agazu tusheli kupi.
I support the bill, but currently we are faced with another problem whereby there's a uko who has been evicted from the house, he does not have a place to stay.
So, nyabonga kakulu.
I'm very much grateful.
Eh, ngisukuma nokbingelela, eh, i kuluse tu, ezisbizile namtsange na singaboko, jengova silan.
Eh, I am greeting my leadership as elderly people.
Eh, ngoasli tawaganchangase osuka ebakulusini, indaweni asamontle.
I am asstina, eh, changase, eh, from Bakulusini et Monjlo.
Eh, sibonga kakulu, eh, osektesa kulunyelwa abapati betu, ngogukuluma, ngeso kupepa, neso kupegelela, ukutikufaneke sipile kanjani, yonke emtezo, efanelegilo, kufaneke siyense, ma ngabeni sithanga besananinkinga.
I am very much grateful about what has been said by our leadership in terms of protection and whatever we are supposed to do when we encounter problems.
Eh, si kona intlanganweni, even ama socialweka wetu, alala eskukuzela, ngalezi indaba esizizwa namtsange, eh, oksalayo, kuvalekusalegitina, ukuti asilan delelu kuti sizenze lezizinto abasfundisa zon.
Eh, in most cases, you find that our social workers, in most cases, they encourage us and tell us about the news that we hear today. But the weakness is with us because we do not practice what we are being taught.
Engibona ayon, jengoba nje sila eh, parliamente, kufaneke sisukume, sisukumeletina, ageko munyamuntu oyogo sugumele, ugumele uisukumele weina, ukobo, kulo ko osukcheliwe, ungaptateli, ukpegelipansi, ukutie ai, eh, ubugele entlin, kuti ai, majemayse boshiwe, kuzoguenzagalani, ngobomto sugumesega, ayu lapo, uwe na, osuke ulugumesega, weina, mto mtala olapo.
Eh, my opinion is that people should not just sit down and say, no, they are not going to do whatever we are advised to do. Because at the end of the day, you find that the person who is a victim is the one who suffers the most and the perpetrator in most cases, eh, just, you know, moves freely. Therefore, it is important for us to do what we are told.
Siyabonga kakulu, kuti, eh, nyawakipa ama workshop, lasangakona, siyofundisa zonke zinto kufaneke siyzenze singabandabatala, emakaya ni etu, kufanele siyitate, siyofundisa, ngisho izugulwane zetu, ekaya, sibasi ze, kupindeksalegitin kuti asigwenzi gonge lok.
I also appreciate the fact that in most of the time, we are taught a lot of things, but it is upon us to go and teach even our grandchildren what we have learned so that we will be able to live easily.
Nje, si kona gesingaboko, si sentlanganweni, inkinga esithanga besananazo, eh, nekelo esinazo, siyakela, ukuti eh, sakelupe la ama senta, la esizoya kona ngoba, kuma senta wetu, utolukuti sisemzini abantu, kuesinskati, sekso kuyushu nushu.
Eh, the only problem or the request that we have as elderly people is that we would appreciate if eh, we could get eh, old age centers whereby we can go as elderly people because in most of the time, the centers that we are using are people's houses. But you will find that as time goes on, there will be, you know, some problems.
Ogunye, eh, la imali nikubandabatala, ay, imali zechile zonaga kulu, kota inkinga ezikonema senta, zinkulu, ngoboko bayatinga ugodla, bafunu godla ngentele, yanagi, eya eh, eyenne, eyennele, onoma ekulisayo, kota majemayotubuyela esmensemali, utolukuti imali, ai vum kuti eh, uyense yonkeleyo, nto iguaz kuti ikubeke ngentele.
Another problem that we have is the issue of money. The money that we get is not enough. As elderly people, we need to eat eh, properly and satisfactorily. But due to financial constraints, we are unable to get enough food.
Eh, ogunye futoku banen inkinga lagoko, sesiba tal, ngishosi le kolene, koto konogunyo se kuspunyuk, siyabatinga lababandoanyana abangani, ukutima base tuze wetu bezosisa, bezosisa ngokusparela, benzama claim, eh, nama bona bengezungena emapank, okoko bezoingenela emapank, koto bona ababe kona etu zane bezosisa, inkinga ya bogeila, isektenini, uizomtola namtsange, ati ha, angtolilut, angtolintip, ai, nyashia.
Eh, another request that we have is that we should be provided with at least our grandchildren who can assist us. Now, the problem is one, is that these children, even if we get them to assist us, you know, in filling in the forms or whatever, not necessarily that we are going to give them money, but if we don't pay them, they stop helping you as an elderly person.
Okoko, twabenze umsebenzi yesandra, bayenze umsebenzi yesandra, abunan daola, beitata kona le umsebenzi abo, ukutipela bayitateke, bayoibega lapo, izam kuti eh, itaisege, gutolaga lo ngan, ukhlala nje pans kuti belok benzange, benzange. Koto masefane ngabegya puma, mtsambe gune magetetise, eh, eskandelu ye onkuti, ni ngaitati ndo zenboko, ni zisenda weni efana njengale, ukuze, uguaz kuti lomkipiso, oh, ha, mbepela.
Another request that we have is the issue of markets. As grandparents or elderly people, we are asked or encouraged to do handwork. But after, you know, producing that handwork, that handwork is not sold anywhere. We therefore request that if you could assist us with markets for our products.
Eh, nogunyege, ukuti eh, sesiba tal, inganza, siyatanda nje ugnawaga kulu, ziasnagi inganse, tese ama socialweka isemakaya, siyatanda nomaspumile nje njanja, ngoba sizenlanganweni, siyatandugnawatina, ukuti, kanganangana, sesi altafultafun, kanganangana, sesi altafultafun, ngoba imo ia pele, ya she shukpele, nje masenzinlangane efana njengale, okoko ngati, eh, banabano kuti balunselewe, izinto zabu, zibenokhelwa, ngoba, mangawanjela, nizotwenze gen, kanti bese kuyin, ngabong.
Eh, my other request is that as elderly people, we need to be taken care of. From time to time, you know, we need something to eat because our sugar levels go down due to hunger. What will happen if I can fall just now? So, make sure that in such gatherings, you prepare things for us as elderly people. Thank you.
Eh, ngibingelela, iskulzonke ekona.
Eh, let me greet all the members of parliament.
Okona, o, bakashelilil parliament.
The community members who are present in this parliament today.
Ngutemsilem Jali, Mtsalaga Wat 22, Olundi.
My name is Temsilem Jali. I live at Wat 22 in Olundi.
Eh, im, ngiyawasapota umtezo.
I support this bill.
Okay, im, ngisokolis, angobangi, fikelati mtsambe zokulumu sokuluniwe.
I will start by apologizing because I got in a bit late. Maybe I might be saying something that has already been said.
Eh, inkinga yami inkulu, eh, okoko nomkulu, sage saba basha sasebenza, sbesi hola, skoke la mare, itisenza konke.
My biggest problem is that as grandmothers and grandfathers, we were once young. We were also employed at a certain stage of our lives. We paid for everything, things like rates and other amenities.
Eh, ageko ongas, uki public servant, eh, iskatesningi, mholo ubamnani, manje umake usuri tatile, uyeshage, uki ngopela usungu se ko actively employed.
Eh, I would assume no one here does not know that as a public servant, the salary is quite low. Even worse, when you retire, it goes down even more because you are no longer a participating employee.
Eh, ngizitola, umbe, nabanye abaningi, ababenekinga banapumile la ngusu, sizitola, sesi valelo ukesi indabazo kuti manje, eh, niktwa wako kilamarits, moyala pahaya, uyofanda out, kutwe ukoleti imali ngaga, ha, ngani am, ingani senritile, kanti amarits ellanini, itingani, kuela pela muholo, utritawzen randi, ngenyanga, na kona futu kuela imali ngan.
I find myself, it's myself and others that I'm representing, that we have a problem in that you would find that our electricity would be cut off. And when you go to investigate, you'd be told that, you ask them that does the rate amount don't go down when you have retired? They would tell you that it only goes down if you earn about 3,000. And also, even on that 3,000, it only goes down by a very little margin.
Benfisimpele uholume, agai bugeleni, ndabu kuti, ilepratis, iyafana kubobonke, nomaspala ngoba, ututu akuluma, utolutu abanye bakpendula gabi, kono munyenge ngazo ngati, genzo jani ke manje, ngoba ngaukesi, anayimali, ngambe ngoybulali, yabo nintenge ngale, ukyunyugi moya ngambela mesa kuluma marits, ngoba, ene, eh, 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 biza eh njalo, ayayunga njalo ngochulai, awazu afota awala, asti eota, asenyugile, aloge nyuga, eh nyuga. Eh, mutu lapewa, manjegua nyomaspala, ay, uma usumtala, amaritsi, kona into abayenza, ukuti, nikwazu, bami te afota peliti, ye, nunina, esenbatala, ngoba felenswanga sahulmalte, niho.
I would like.
Ukupi nomaspala ma, upumaspala, bizu inklakulungla.
Olundi pela, olomaspala, abanye njengoma, maspala setewin, bakoka maritsa manngani la, babandubakona, lababataha.
Owala elundi.
Owala olundi, inkinga.
All right.
It's this municipality here in Olundi that has a problem.
Skulumis zinto njengoba zinjalongo. Eh, ngikwe. Eh, manje, ukinkingimpela, ukinkingimpela, ogunyege, engifisa ugu guusho.
It's quite a problem. Another thing that I would like to state is.
Eh, eh, ugnabanda baningi, asebange, nagleliso, baklamua kama nyamazo, asmankinga nabu, inkinga manje, bana mataqshop, manje glamatqshop abe, ebsuhu, wenzaga izidesngazazi, siyitole, nati sngasapepili, kono munyenge, wa enhuba.
There's a lot of people who are foreign internationals who have come into our communities. We have no problems with them per se, but they own tagshops. And in these tagshops, at night, a lot of things happen there. I had one incident where one individual was actually chasing me.
Manje, nage.
Umbopisil.
Angimbopisanga, ngoba saguazu, kuti ngamemeza, oma kelone bambamba, bamshaya wasebalega.
I did not. I called out and the neighbors came out and they assaulted him and then he ran away.
Eh, manje, eh, 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 unyesipaulayo, ene, bana, 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 bana mapiznis.
We've also noticed.
Bana mapiznisi, umutu lapega, tina, mesfuna uku bana mapiznisi, agesiksi chachoa i rent enkulu, bona ba chachoa i rent enga.
We've also noticed that they all have businesses. Um, when we try to get into these businesses, we are charged exorbitant amounts for rent, but they get very low rent amounts.
Ogoklinage, ngi, oguinkinga, gesautafrigayonke, nati safitege gile, ile ulomte towa shawa uholume ni, angazi, nama upelela, guma civil servants pela, ukutumtumeze over thirty-five, angakasha, ayanda, ama para, ingane zetu zoku, kanga sebenz.
Eh, another problem, as I conclude, is the law, I'm not sure whether it comes from the government, that people at of the age of thirty-five are unemployable. Eh, we are seeing our children turning into vagrants and that is increasing. Thank you.
Kakupa, yasaba.
All right.
Yasinku. Sanmonani kuluse tu.
Eh, greetings to the honorable members.
Nbingelele, ngibingele, non tangayetu.
Eh, let me also greet my peers.
Ngina, ngina inkinga endili.
I have two problems.
Eh, lapa ezaleni, bayasfona ela bati, siyahamba ngetete tele, siyadala.
On the issue of games, eh, we would get a call and you'd be told we are going somewhere on a certain date to play.
Malfigusugu, ushaluli ndilisulu ngsele, uyafonobuze, kuhanjua ngan, nbesebeta baz.
Eh, when the date actually comes, you prepare yourself and then you sit there and you wait. Eh, they do not come, you pick up a phone and you call as to what's the mode of transport, how do we get there, and they tell you, we do not know.
Situnes ngasahambile, koto asibaligu ti, siyahamba, siyagozala.
We end up not going anywhere, whereas we had been included as part of the people who would go to those games.
Ubanilo.
Le itwel funjegate kuzala.
Kubani lo nifonela.
Ubanilo nifonela kuti, nizoyoza.
Sugue ufonelu eh, socialweka.
You'd be called by the social worker.
Ukona lapa lusocialweka.
Angazi, nomukona, ngoba.
Yamasikamalaki.
Ikamalaki kuelaza.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mbiza ge ka, amulhalanga animos.
Ah, zombiza ge ka.
I will not mention his name.
Uyamzaba.
Yeah.
Siyiche la sinese joriti, na angamapo isana.
Kuna mapo isana, no no card.
Huh? Ay, angizombiza, koto kona vyanser, intlanganweni etu, tina, intlanganweni etu, Isbonelo, sega Wat 23.
I will not give out his name, but what happens is that we have an organization called Isbonelo at Wat 23.
Yeah, iloko obegunkitiga, di, no kutige, sine sakio lapo, sista ke kona, sivokoko, sasisakela tina, koto manje, sesi akreka.
Eh, also the fact that we have a structure that we had erected ourselves as grandmothers, but with time, it is becoming a bit dilapidated.
Nefeni shanjoba tewu, guno mkschanelo, sikhiesi sngasai, sishigi sijyo mshu.
Eh, even the furniture, the furniture that was there since there was COVID and we were not attending to the place, eh, it has been damaged. uh, it has been, uh, damaged and it's rotting, even the doors.
Ne mali ge ingane bagiti esingene layo, isi esimpele.
Uh, and we also get quite a low amount of money. The money that we receive has gone down quite a bit.
Niabo.
Thank you.
Uya ukasa oka nyua ukasum tetoslo melu si zena oma.
Mama? Uki uya ukasa no ma awu ikasa na lumetoslo si zena.
Se ukasa. Ka amalisho ngoba lo social worker tina sizomtola.
Uh, we do support it.
Ya u support. Ika malaki. Ika ma, uju lietinkomonde, umapengu.
Uh, ju lietinkomonde, umapengu.
San, sanbona non kenliin.
Uh, greetings to everyone in the house.
Ngibingalele ne kuluse tu, eh pume palamente, niabo ngubala inlin.
Let me also greet the honourable members from parliament and I'm grateful to be in this house today.
Eh, no mte to, eh, nguswa yo kukulunya ngawo, nyau klasa kakulu.
Uh, we also suppo- I'm also supporting this bill that is, uh, before us today.
Eh, in kulumo yami yokala je uki ika malami ngungu Priska Sibia.
Uh, my name is Priska Sibia.
Eh, ngipuma eh Denny Dalton.
From Denny Dalton.
Kumaspala waso lundi ward twenty-three.
Ward twenty-three under Olundi municipality.
Eh, iskalo sami siso tuasi woko oko.
I only have one complaint. Uh, we as grandmothers.
Sia serebenza senzi miserebenza yesanla kota siyenzela egungazin uki siyenzela gopi asinayo iinlu.
Uh, we, uh, do sort of like what we could call handwork or craft work, but we do that, uh, without knowing where we are going to store it because we do not have a structure or a house to put it.
Eh, sienzela emzinomuntu, ngesin skati ma userebenza emzinomuntu. Angege uense into okfane luku tuyense uneenda olapu falu hambe utrine konna ngoba pela omkaya omuntu.
Uh, we use somebody's home. Uh, now, if you're working at somebody's home or doing something in someone's home, you can't be as free as you'd want. There are certain limitations.
Eh, ispre posenda oyowaka ngizamile ngoba ngonopale itla nganuene footi ngikui committee seni stoli.
Uh, I have, uh, tried because I'm a secretary and I'm also in a committee. We, uh, have been able to identify a piece of land that we can use to build.
Inke ngayami wan.
I only have one problem.
Asinayo imali.
We do not have money.
Yo uki saki upala pesu gama kanda itu.
To build a structure and a roof over our heads.
Kumplo ngakulu kongo ba mina nyatando userebenza, nyatando wenzomsebenza yesanla kota manje utolu uki. Ah 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 guesasisi utrina u- ufi sa luku tufenu yeke itla nganuene uyohila la stressa kowe duinli.
This is very painful because as a person who likes doing handwork or craft work, uh, when you do that and then you see we do not have a place, you end up sort of like, uh, feeling like you might as well just give up and go sit at home and deal with your own stresses.
Loko iki ben kalanga koka kulu isakiwa, ugnenge angina kota ingane zamizona. Eh, ngilizina zinli na serebenza zonazufundile.
Uh, I was actually complaining about th- that structure. Um, I don't have a lot, my children as well. I live with them at home. They are well educated, but they are unemployed.
Eh, in deplo ngi ngibona yo ngoba ngi lapanje ngpelele. Ben omuntu umsebenza ku iliko ta ge angshata angani lalalekae.
The pain that I'm seeing as I'm here is that I was once an employee in Khauti, but I'm not married, I'm living at home.
Eh, namshanzo namshanzo ya utolumsa dona ganza. Angofoni, angofoni.
I do not want it.
Angofoni. Eh, in deplo ngi ngi ngimu ge ingane zikoni inli ngizamile ngawon kamalikusaba lazitngifundise umserinza zuutoli asinaku.
The problem is that, um, I have tried by all means to educate my children who are with me now. They are educated, but they do not have jobs.
Gule maleni hola u two thousand, agi ingi fil.
From the two thousand rents that I, uh, get as pension, I'm not going to hide that.
Kufane libonke labantu bache bakoke bensekonge.
Everyone in this house must eat, they must also be clothed and everything must come from this money.
Imali engihola yo angbonu uki wenzaga lani ngayo.
Uh, I cannot.
Yaskalela government uki dula uki ulala eto lo ba gitise welulele, sono, sono.
I cannot say what I do with this money and I'm also, um, pleading with government. The food prices have gone up so high, there is nothing we can do about it.
Ngolestatu nja sobesoli stola imadietim peshe nkonala olundi. Eh, ama price apinda la tatu N twenty-one.
On Wednesday, we would be receiving our pensions here at Olundi, but you'd find that, uh, a one food item would, um, be triple priced.
Koto manje zalagu izi fifteen ngi vaga shelenzo utolta ama price a normal ngoba kola bantebaga hulume, niabo.
But if you come here during the month on the fifteen, you'd find that the prices are lower because they are government people. Thank you.
Omam, konna, oh mama baxezila aba funukulum, la ngapambil.
Ula baba ngapambil bakona bafusu kulum.
Okay, ma siye konna kwele kalage, kwele ital, sbugiza nja. Maskalela ikoneni one, two, three, sive seshulela guma four, four. Si hambesie pa, guma ma otoke something e pinkish nkloko ne coat e white. Ma, skulumanga wo ngufo, skulumengo ba abalo onge semova. Sivu uyeshisa ngapa. Siye kuwe nababe klini, sisa kuwe baba, bonawe nanga, osa. Si pele ge fonau. Uh, si- si she she gene si skati sesi hambile, eh, asfuna bantu ba uela ishuke. Isbongo ungasbulis sasbulisi uke manje ushuku tumbani, uyagupi, unye nemkoli.
Uh, do not greet us, just tell us who you are, where you are from and continue.
Oh, Jingase Manana.
I am Jingase Manana.
Ngikamka konala pa, kumaspara waso lundi.
I am from Olundi municipality.
Eh, ngizo beka, ngi nyau supporta um tetu lo o o xongozwayo.
I support the bill.
Eh, ngifunungeze lela je, oku nga ne ose kukuluniwe uki ezakiwe ni lezi ezema places of safety. Eh, siyakela uki uholume etu uspege uki eenda wenzo onke zikona ngoba. Aba- a- a- kwa zinyenda onju tolo kuta ziku. Besekswela galitila babantu abati ngogia lapo basiwa gopi.
Uh, my request or my, eh, issue is on the issue of places of safety. Now, when it comes to the issue, eh, the places of safety is that you don't find them everywhere. In some places, they are missing. Therefore, it becomes a problem as to where will one place, eh, people who need to be kept in these places.
Besen ngikwaga ngitila payana eh, e- 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 indawen lezo. Uholume nefuti aspege lele ngoba. Utolu kuta abantu abafa we konna ngaba bantaba talan ngaba bantaba kuba zigili, abapate giga.
My other request is that, uh, the government should look into the issue of safety into the people who are being kept in these places of safety. It could be elderly people or people living with disabilities.
Besen ngena, eh, oktenetina jenga bantaba talan. Igakuluka ze indawenza sema eh ezinga kwe matulupi ne zisema kaie. Eh, kusinekinga inkulu eh, ngotaba loa manzi sia bantaba tal.
Uh, another problem that we have as elderly people in rural areas is the issue of water.
Utolu kuta makfane luyo wa kemfuli na manzi. Okoko no mkuulu, kungeke ingane zikisayu. Awazu ku tualalo entezo kanga ayamanzi ngoba peliasinda naman- namanda waseko.
Now, you find that as an elderly person, if you go to the river to fetch water, you are unable to even pick up whatever packet or container that you have because the strength is no more.
Uholume ge uyaletha kwa zinyenda wo ngama water tankers. Koto na was the same problem eh eh uki unegu kwa zuku. I- 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 kichi manje ngabanta basha uyela pa kuwa water tanker esu kumen da wananitizini uyokto shakona manzi.
Yes, the government does sometimes provide water tankers, but as elderly people, the problem that we face is that we are unable to run as fast as these young children who can quickly just go and collect water there from those water tankers. We still experience the problem of heavy packets as elderly people.
Steluhulume ni eh opeteza manzi. Ay fage pela i- etreni ngana ngakoma spala. Ukuze kupege lele uki ababena matanga bantaba talima kaie, bezo oketu zan.
I therefore request that the government should make sure that the Department of Water provides elderly people with water tanks so that they will be able to get water in their homes or in nearer places.
Sen trina eh, slalo ami. Eh, ben boga, mshambe ngi 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 ngikbuwa nginyinze la mina. Kola manje ngikbuwa unati si shoka kulu ama individual concerns. Oguzo be, oguzo swenza slalela usugulo onge ngoba ge ekonke na inkinga. Kanti kfunega skulume generali oguzo sisa abantu bonke.
Uh, Chairperson, uh, when I look, the problem here is that, uh, most of the people here, they are voicing individual, eh, problems. But in essence, what needs to happen here is that people should talk about general problems whereby everyone will be able to benefit.
Niato oza slalo.
Thank you very much, Chairperson.
Unrama uyaukasa umtitataosi xomelo ofori. Ngisho ngala slalo uki nyau ukasa.
Ya ukasa.
I indicated from the beginning that I support the bill, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Niabo slalo.
And the entourage, eh, your entourage, eh, I greet all the people in the house.
Ngibingalela wongu mondu la penkini.
Um, firstly, I would like to support the bill.
Oka la nja slalo zotando segelam tetos viveni.
Um, my points here are going to be the mo- the mo meat into what other people have said, um.
Eh, ama pozo amigela na azo banenyama no mangese nyama glora banya bantese bakshilo.
Yes, okay. And, um, there is another thing that has not, eh, sit well, that has not sat well with me.
Konin tena ngpatanga kache.
Uh, is that Chairperson, is that, eh, we were promised to have a breakfast here, but, eh, what we received is just water.
Eh, slalo ge konin tena ngpatanga kache tinashtengi si uki tisozotele isilu sasekseni lapu. Koto agi intisi ituili nja manzi woto.
Nitengi swa ngbanima, mbizengeka.
Who promised you? Just, eh, call that person by name.
It was Mr. Plum who was sent by the parliament to come and, and address us.
Eh, um, nomza no Plum, uchi nyelwe parliament ba azu kulumana ti.
Lindi, do you know Mr. Plum? Okay. Oza ngapambili skulumega man, eywe. Alright, mama, konde.
Thank you. Eh, my point under education.
Puzla amigela lokala ngapansi kweze mfundu.
Education is when you learn and you teach and learn until, until you die.
Yenzeka ge lapo ufunda konna, futufundiswa konna uze ge uyofa.
We have teachers who are teachers until their death.
Sinoti shage abafundisa bazee bashoni.
Elder teach- elder te- elderly teachers carry a lot of knowledge with them when they pension.
Uti shage abanenge asebaba talan. Uki ge umasekfigis katsempeshe ne, utolutige bahamba no lozi ol ning.
Can the parliament or the government give them an opportunity to be re-employed so that that knowledge, that, that, that they can carry that knowledge into the next generations?
Bestela uki parliamente, ligele ibu, lumu utaba lo uki la uki shaba pinde bakashu epela. Ukuze bazoo wazu uki bazulu selle lozi, wenzene izi sugulwa.
They can only, uh, they can also be used to, to, to organize other elderly to, to, to facilitate the workshops, trainings and many other things. But in a level of being, eh, re-employed.
La uki shaba kuma ngenzeka mshambe bakinde bakashu ba ngalegelela uki ge abafundisa bo na labantu ge abatala. Mshambe uki baba workshop e, futige baba train.
I'm, I'm going to also touch on the home-based care. Eh, the home, uh, and home-based care should be increased to cover those who cannot live independently.
Eh, ngitaba uki ge ama home-based ke kufanelege eangezwe. Ukuze azo wazu pele uki, uh, mama tenoma afage abani la baba nguazu kuzpila ngabutuana.
Especially the poor of the pooras.
Igakuluka zige la bu abashkuembo kakulu.
Eh, I'm gonna touch also on the point of i- 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 of health. There is a, a point which is very, very, eh, eh, um, touch to me.
Kune pozu ge elintinda yo, yo tabenge leze mbi lo.
There is a disease called dementia.
Unesifo esbizungu uki dementia.
Many of the elders in our communities, they suffer.
Inenge la bantaba talan, emparatini etu ba petweile sifo.
When, when they are suffering from this disease, they are found, they found themselves being, eh, abused. They find themselves being in danger of being, eh, torched by the community simply because they are identified as riches.
Eh, nganwa uki ge ba petweile sifo. Eh, labantaba talabazu tolage basengozi niyo uki bangashiswa no ma balinyazwe. Nganwa uki pela batatu anje ngabantu uki umaseba tuki le uki wa bayata.
Can the government or the parliament assist the community with workshops to the, to the, to the communities, including the youth and the grandchildren of these, eh, elderly people? So that all people, eh, have the knowledge of what this disease is and, and also so that the, the elders can be safe from being, eh, endangered.
Bestela uki hulume na ngenelele, ngu uki pela fundisa umpara tiga kuluka zincha ngalesi sifo. Ukuze abantaba talabazo pepa, nompara tuazu uki kukonisi esbizungu uki ge it dementia.
We also need the support services to be readily available.
Uki ge abekona sasongiska.
Coming to the point of the least, the housing for seniors.
Eh, umaseyengeze ge utabenile zinlu ge eskashela abantaba talan.
Eh, the government can provide medium-income seniors, individuals and couples with affordable monthly rental. individuals and couples with affordable monthly rental.
Eh hulumeneke agazamele pela eh abantu mshampe esngati eh sebaba talaa. Ngoguti baba legelele uti i rentile aba ikukayo ngenyanga. Kubbe eh renti eh ngani esngati ge hulumena ngaba subsidize.
Yes, and then coming to the personal care home benefit.
Besegi esesi za gu, personal home care benefit.
We need to be provided with financial assistance for seniors to apply for.
Sittinga uti ge abantabatala balegelele uguza pela ba applyele imali eh zo balegelela.
In a licensed personal care home.
Eh le malige uchfanele uktino ma ipuma inigezele kleylo kaya. Kota le ohumle uchfanele ibesemtetwini ngama yamaka ma ibe licensed.
Coming to the programs and services of interest.
Umasisage ma programs, nama services of interest.
We need the, 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 the parliament to find information about programs and services of interest for seniors and provide them.
Eh stelagutige hulumene azame uti ge anigeza abantabatala ngazinsiza. Nezintelo futi esngalegelela buloko.
Services of interests.
Nama services of interest.
Yes, then coming to the rental housing for elders with low income.
Eh besegi sisa lapayana esinkini leses ngakashu epela abantabatala bahola ngani.
This can be provided for both urban and rural communities.
Lugu ge kunaenzelwa ngisho umparatella eh indaweni ezema panjeni naso indaweni ezema tulopi.
Nje ngala boko konje eh Chairperson. Alaba agati be kulumi ndaba yoguti ekaya ulushozi ngane zake. Agasena yowindawo yoku eh pepili yokhlala. So eh environment asesigwe ekaya iseko conducive to, 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 for safety. And then uholungilege ama social amtate amuse in the place of safety la ezogazu khalakona akulule.
Eh like in a place, Chairperson, whereby eh you find that some of the elderly people have indicated here that if an elderly person now is a victim and is abused by a grandchild, social workers should intervene and take that elderly person to a place of safety.
The last thing that I will say, Chairperson.
Owo kenezo ushoslalo.
Is, is that eh let us celebrate eh Seniors or Elderly People's Day all over, not only tho- in those particular areas where the government is able to, 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 to stage those things, but to be celebrated all over, even especially in the rural areas. Thank you.
Eh owo kinaslalo ge aske pela silkope usugula bantabatala. Yonki ndawo ngabi ngi ugeti logo kwenzeka eh indaweni ezteses ketegile. Ngishoge kufinyelele ngisho naso indaweni ezema panjeni. Niya bon.
Alright, man pindi genini kumbuzenge mizuzu umdu amelu yaitet.
Let me remind you.
Amfunanga nje oma ukumkaola pakati.
Remind you.
Batinkela la sabmishiniaki le abeyirita la ayin genisa la petafli. Ezma bisichil, ngoba ibe return la, la, la sabmishiniaki. Ya bonu kutanga ilhulis. At least strelugutunga ilhuli five minutes.
Let us uh remind ourselves of the time that is allocated. Um we request that you do not go over five minutes.
Eh ikamalamu Hamilton Sibanyoni. Kamwa lapakulanchun, Segusile Lanchun Club kuna lapo Ulundi.
My name is Hamilton Sibanyoni from.
Segusile Lanchun Club.
Segusile Lanchun Club at Ulundi.
Eslo samigenzoku ma ngaso ugozi vota vota kwa bantu abatala.
I will speak directly to um exercising of elderly people.
Siyatelabu parliamente elukolu national ugoti mshambeliseze eh omaspala abanganu kusukela kurijin, kuma regina, kuma district, kuma lokal. Uti basitalele in kunkuja ezingo nywana lakusutimakuana abantu abatala.
We would request from um National Parliament that they assist the smaller municipalities, be it from region or even provincial, that they um assist us to get places or fields where we could actually exercise as elderly people.
Ngoba inkunkuja eh kona manje indaweni suguene eh eh suitable for juniors, not suitable for ama abantabatala. Ngoba kwezi banga limalu ma banga tere la uzu.
Because the fields or the, the premises that are currently available in different places, they are only suitable for younger people, not for elderly people. If elderly people were to use such facilities, there would be a higher chance of them getting injured.
Baninga abantabatala aba imisela ngoki vota vota kote inkinga manje. But inga ezintozukhamba. Mshambu hulumena mkuu la uma nga provider indaweni sasukasewa na provincial or national. I transport ezotwala abantabatala mshambengi once a week.
There is eh quite a number of elderly people who are willing and who are actually enthusiastic about exercising. But we would then have to request that eh parliament or national government assist that they get transport even if it's maybe just once a week.
Labo sebafigi ile kulezunda wo aba kwasu kufinyelela uzu. Tenzeka mshambengi oma sebaka diye wu vota vota no ma basa vota vota. Diya tinga kubekuana amansi alansegile eh mshambengi nama veg, nama fruits.
If the elderly people do manage to get to these facilities, they do their exercises. And when they are finished, eh it is important that there should be fresh water and something to eat, could it be vegetables and fruits?
Seko nage istingo samanes ugeti azo sisa lapo ngoba gezepele mutumtala tintega. Tutututumshambaleka ines esetuzani. Abekuana mshambengi inesa eloto no mama bile kulezunda wo abantabatala aba vota vota uzu.
There is also a great need for medical staff to be present. There could be nurses because it does happen that eh as elderly people are exercising, something happens to one and there are no medical um personnel or nurses to assist.
Siyatinga futu kubekuana aba kakeishi abana aluluazi dokta kesho abantabatala. Uma bez vota vota lapo inkuljeni abachimela uzu.
We also need to have knowledgeable coaches that would be able to coach and train the elderly people eh as they are busy doing their exercises.
Senkrina asbe kona ge ezintozuku, zuku vota vota esprovider omasipala. Kusukela nje pezu luku national kuzefiyela ikuneni.
In conclusion, there should be um gym equipment or eh equipment used eh to exercise that shall be provided by municipalities eh from national all the way to local municipalities.
Benxilo utingo Hamilton Sibanyoni ogushu uti ulhelo ni alsupport two hundred percent.
As I had said, I'm Hamilton Sibanyoni. I support this bill two hundred percent.
Angtogo ze mpatu hlelu ikamalamu kokubonisu wenchali.
Thank you, program director. My name is Bonisiu Wenchali. I live here in Ulundi.
Senzulege neskat ute eh sesesfishan ogwamsekzo banje i paramis.
I have heard about the issue of time that it's been shortened. I would just like to eh give out my recommendations.
Is paramiso so samso kala uku ba strele uku ba eh hulumene asenuzele imali esitola yongenyanga.
My first recommendation would that we are pleading with the government that they raise the amount of money we get on a monthly basis.
Ngoba siyabona pelu uti zonki zintozenu we ganga ganani.
Because we, we can all see how everything else eh has gone up price-wise.
Gya kolu kutabashonisha eh buyers boona futu buyers uti. Jengo ba nabu ikro saba benza ngone one thousand, mshambengi manse benza ngone five thousand.
I also believe that the honourable members also know and they see because eh the groceries that they might have used to buy for a thousand renz now costs about five thousand.
Gangaga na nige tina eswenza gonke ngu two thousand.
And how worse for us who have to do all of that on a sum of two thousand renz.
Si besipege uwele ngani.
We are still having a duty to support our children.
Sonte na bazugulu.
Also support our grandchildren.
No kunyogni.
And a lot of other things.
Ngoba inkingenkulu sonja nezeti ngane zalalezi ngane.
Because another problem is that we have to support our own children who are parents to the grandchildren.
Ngangwa yowe tuleka kwezemesi.
This is due to the high unemployment rate in the country.
Siyakela ge uku ba imali bantajalu ngenyang, ngonyaga. Naati ma swekushulewa bantusanga kushulewa ngo ten rand na ngo twenty rand.
We would also request that on a yearly basis, when everybody else is getting increments, we should not get an increment of about ten renz or twenty renz.
Ogusbilisi ya kela pela naati njenga bantabatala uku ba nisbonelele ku medical aid.
We would also request as elderly people that there should be a certain benefit for us as elderly people on medical aids.
Igakulgazi mbiilo yetu pelisi antenga antenga.
It's more especially because our health is now frail.
Ogus tatu eh siyapega ukunganagegelegi kuetu.
Thirdly, we are noticing eh how we are not necessarily cared for.
Umasiya eh indawenzo kohola.
Especially when we go to these pension payout points.
Umasi sugue nomu ngabi se itolo no ma ngabi se mapenki.
It could be either at the stores, shops or even the banks.
Utola bantabatala be bambulai no mute.
You'd find elderly people in a very, very long queue.
Abanya bavugepsugu emakaya.
Some, some people have to leave their homes at night.
Uti gusa ubatolese beziki ngipamwe ito.
By the time the morning comes, you'd find them lying around eh in front of the shops.
Ogo kale esipega uti aguko mishit toilet.
Firstly, what we look at is the fact that there aren't, there aren't any ablution facilities.
Aguko shelter la be kosrela kona.
There is no shelter where they can um sit under.
Uma kunimvula zia batinda zelagla in.
Should it rain, the, the rain would come and go eh eh. It would actually just rain on them.
Aguko manzo poza bantabatala.
There is no drinking water for the elderly people.
Eh busiga bapulawa makaza aguko nenkomishi esupu.
In winter, they would freeze out because of the cold. They don't even get eh 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 a cup of soup.
Siyangu sa agubuhulumene na lapo aspegelele.
We do plead with our government to assist us on that one.
Sitogo zilege ugeti hulumene namtlange afige azozwa ngati eh uma kukuluniwa eh ngalipil.
We are actually eh happy that the government has come to hear from us in terms of this bill.
Ngigusho ngoba si teesa luka zesewa sektua eh ashinja makati siyohola eh mapenki.
I'm saying this because as elderly people, we only heard when we were told that we have to change cards so that we can be paid at the banks.
Animanje wasasa naso posin.
We did not know why we were being changed from Sasa as well as the post office.
Ngoba be gumnandi gitimasole posin.
Because it was better for us to get our monies from the post office.
Ah wekola makati joba senzuyis kalosi gaga sen ngani ezisukumezayo.
Because there were no cards, as you have heard, a number of complaints of our children who are abusing us.
Siyaliswa izi ngale technology uti lpezulanga ganani.
We can see how high the, the, the technology standard has gone.
Uyabona ge gu- 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 gululhelo loasi mapenki.
You see, in the issue of um the, the banks.
Uma uyohola washisenu layakonje kuilale ngoba kukonale ndwe ya ma app.
Eh if you are going to get your, your pension and if you mistakenly leave your cellphone, you'd be in trouble because there are apps now.
Zebelin ga de kofa ze kofa ze uyoboni imali akusai se.
Yeah, the kids will just play around with your phone and the next thing, your money is gone.
So ganti lapaya epen ka ikin- lapaya eposina ikin daba ya ya la ma apps.
Whereas in the post office, they do not have any apps.
So ge si, siyango ma ugeti hulumene agalpegelele lo ulhelo eh lo, lo, loa se posini. Lo Sasa ngentelega tesola ngayo.
So we would recommend that government pays a bit of attention on the Sasa program as well as the post offices when it comes to our pensions.
Itenili maleto ingani.
Our money has been finished by our own children.
Ayge giatogo.
Eh thank you, thank.
Eh ngia tanda ubingelela ni tafula lo nke ngensalata ngikunlaza.
Let me just greet the entire table. I will not go into their respective positions.
Ka na oza kuetu ngayi.
I will not also leave my colleagues out.
Eh lapo ekulumen kwame nzo tindanjekala. Indaba yogulungselela i briefing esbena yokala ngfunu kala lapo.
Before I speak, I would like to start eh with the briefing that we had before we came here.
I briefing bata te indawo esuzo, esuzo bambela kiyo no mshanganu loesu wa na namshangi. Yakonja kweelingi wolo.
The briefing eh took this meeting that we are presently in today and they said it would be in another hall.
Kanti inva mingsa uma kuba nama briefings no ma imipimya ngatikuna ne kuluma ngelend. Wa rural iso ktsajanzala ilah kuleli parliamente. Ngobinda wu ibanzi ngowe nnelele liyaholi ngaba senela ngaklo.
Usually when we have any briefings, eh we had one about land. They are all usually held here because this place is wide enough. Eh in that other hall, we wouldn't have fitted.
Engusho uti esparamsile sakala za ngako. Waseguti tneni bapuma labo na yu Mr. Plum lo na oge wato la ka us- usizi leti na ngali onkati.
Eh we did complain about it and then.
Sa kombeina ge nasamjala sati ta ngage kulu ngakuma siyela pan. Sifuna kuma sisa eh parliamente sizo wenzako. Ngampela baba, abantabatala bayacha wula si ibonasilele parliamente sanga lazisita wongose.
Even.
Siyabona siyahali alisa.
Mr. Plum himself did assist us in that regard because we said we were not.
Ni apume tv. Ayge ni vilene. I blast le, I blast.
That's a plus, that's a plus.
Omalo hlele kamkwam u indompya ke se imtumelele yonkele ndekobe kaya yongo bui buke tv.
Eh the lady next to me is daughter. I sent her a link because they are watching everything on TV.
Ay, siyicha blela ngoba sbone ngati sutelelegilete masanga lete parliamente. Uti kuzi eh parliamente. Ay, siyabona ke man.
We are happy. We thought we were being neglected, that we are not brought to parliament when it's here. We are happy. Thank you.
Ngikela unge na ku budget. I budget niya kela bago etu uti. Imnyango ngemnyango ayponu uti abantabatala bato la islice esgache se cake.
Let's start with the budget. Eh I would request that eh each and every department should ensure that elderly people are giving eh a piece of the cake that is enough.
Futu bekli ya ugetu masiya emnyango enotile sizo figure sizo sisa galaganjana nikulumnyango.
It should.
Si tolle i education through UTSD ogu ibona bazalbet UTSD.
It should.
Uti sizo sisa galaganjana kuma siyo tolale mnyango astoli education.
It should also be clear as to how we are going to be assisted. Eh we should get as eh some sort of workshops or education from DSD because they are the ones who look after us as to how do we approach to get this assistance.
Ngitindala pananga ba uko nindaba ye grant in aid ya bantu abatala.
I speak about this because there is a grant in aid for elderly people.
Ayenyo gine oma.
That money never goes up.
Ayenyo nga timpe la ilapago four fifty.
I think it's somewhere around four hundred and fifty.
Six hundred. Si kufuki kotoa ayayiku ndawa ifige lendha.
It hasn't gone in yet still.
Ilungu niloku tika ta. Kotoa if- ngoba labo bantbe grant in aid. Ibona kanya batinga ugeti basi zagale. Baguazu kasha bantu abazo balegele. Kulmela lapo uti nga timpe la na ya ifige pela kotoa uzee.
Eh it hasn't gone eh eh up that much because the people who are benefiting from this grant in aid are the very people that need to hire people to help them. So the money should go up. Eh maybe it should reach eh say a thousand.
Utate wetlosuala ukulume ngendaba yoku plumezeka ngendaba ya ma cellphone.
Eh the lady eh that just spoke in front of me spoke eh about the abuse that could come through cellphones.
Minangzofala oguti ngapesu wako asitoli training ngo four I R.
Eh I would like to add on top of that, that we need training in terms of the fourth industrial revolution.
Nakoge goba lapo ukunsile ingani zetu sista tele imali lokeni ten ngani na unghofelala.
Because she was telling the truth. Our children are taking our, our monies eh and I would be saying, please do this for me on the phone.
Goba natastada lamas fonsfona twalinrebe kotanga kwasukisibenzis.
Because we also like these modern phones but we are not able to use them.
Malie nagese atanda oguti asitoli training D S eh 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 D S D angislegalele asitoli training nomani ukomba nitindala namopu nyango pelimnyango yasibenzis.
Eh D S D, please assist us. Eh we should have training, whichever department it should be because you work together, we should have a training on the four I R.
Umteto eh o, o, o ko nange ngamange awabe inline nezinde etile ika kulunga ma service centers.
The law that is present or eh eh functional right now must be in line especially with service centers.
Ukona lendaba ga seventeen rand eh eighty-five eh eighty-five cents seventeen comma eight-five.
There's this issue of seventeen renz eighty-five cents that is a daily allowance?
Kweyabo oguti so tolal i breakfast, lunch, na na kotwa tinala payana konabanda banga gudzut abango na yusakela pela oguti tutu.
We, it would be for breakfast?
Leo, leo amand esitola eh nganga ma service center.
Lunch and supper.
Goba, yes.
But we have people with different diet eh diet needs, so we would also request that that money be also raised up a bit.
Eh ogunye mfyso ogusho oguti makonda na nama home based care center. I act eh ai show oguti ubani opfalele enze ini.
In terms of the home based care centers, eh the act does not state categorically who is responsible for this and for that.
Nomao D S D, nomao health, goba ukona lapo abatala benga ukune gap. Kulukulomteto lapo gule, gule, gule paragraph.
Whether it is D S D or the Department of Health, there is a gap on that particular section of the bill.
Yeah. Gushutie ogunye mfyso ogwenza makonda nama service centers is staffing.
Eh another issue that I wanted to look into in particular about service centers would be the staffing.
Ama crash abane staff S N L ukubekona abenzugut kotasongesela panzi eh wet, wet department.
Crashes would have enough staff, they would have people who do different things, but we are all under the department.
Sitakubekona abazu kwasupasupa bantabatala.
We say there should be those who would care for the elderly people.
Abatre no bantabatala ngai indigenous policy. Puti banga goshaganjani goba indigenous policy ya tingalala kotasiyazi.
Elderly people should be trained on the indigenous policy.
Kanti yonisiza yo ogu ikona kotasiyazu kutitola galaganjani uzusu ambusupega ndekuneni kutinzo ngwachaga njani.
It is required, but we do not know it, whereas it's something that we all need to know. Eh you'd find that people are sitting wondering how they'd be buried.
Aye ukatuwage ogutbanga rana nabenza u, u hundred years ezinasi tenary. Bono oguti banga legelewa njani wenzu injimku po ya abo enda wenge enda ogokini nangi ay supporti bill.
We should look at how many people complete a centenary. They should be celebrated eh in different places. And lastly, I support the bill. Thank you.
Uema ngenisa ezee eh 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 lentetaya kui ngenise la petafli. Oh, no palu pet, palace. Eh angalukbingelela eh itafala longke abashonupegile basa parlament.
Let me start by greeting the entire table, the honourable members from parliament.
Ma committees akona.
All the committees present amongst us.
Osaguetu asikisaka nganimaa kunala bantabatala bamilela vetongin minangalukba kapela manje. Mabakale na zitulesitu bayazoguti basen vago banimos.
Let the elderly people who are standing there come and sit down here, here at the chairs.
Na izitulesitu. Barais eh barstrongo eh, strongish, alright. Kwegeka mama. Eh ikamalami opiliswe ngemal ngxala goba twelve ulundi.
I am Pilisilwe Ngemal from what, twelve here at Ulundi.
Eh umbongitu balogba gule ndau.
Thank you for the opportunity to be in this place.
Is submission ya mi imali nanokslukumezega ukona ekayo.
My submission is about the harassment or abuse that is prevailing at home.
Ekayala minxala no mama o, o, o mama wa omani eh osakulili.
At home, I'm staying with my mother, who is younger than my mother, but she is already an elderly person.
Ukona ge umzuguluake ashala na ekayala.
There's a grandchild that she stays with at my house.
Uchoi lukhamba ge ayupuza uchoala.
Eh this grandchild usually goes and drinks.
Uma ngabe se buyirichuala ma ngabe se hameo ayupuza abu yama late hours saslele.
When he's drunk, he comes back during the late hours.
Uma ngabe saslele afiga avule goba samnige zo key opula esangweni lasentlin jange member of family.
When he comes late, he opens the gate and the door. He hears this key as a member of the family.
Uma ngabe figure kaye drunk enzalo ufige afuni zinde ipegega.
When he comes home drunk, he needs food.
Atateki zinto apeka volisto fakulis tena point six peso.
He switches on the stove, that is an electric stove, and puts it at six.
Yes, apege uma ngabe pegutologuti mtlampemanga be ovugepsugu konite kixayaka ndugiashakishi.
Eh when he cooks at night, you'd hear something burning and only to find that there's something burning in the kitchen.
Esitola asitologuti uma ngabe se begelele le, le, lokukulakbegizege eh ifige langile. Yaha mbaya la labese chume kasilit.
What we've discovered is that when he comes late at home, he would cook and then go and sleep and leave the stove on.
Ngeli ngela ngakwenze gili lokukwase kwasha i hobi stove ay sekos.
This happened one day until eh the hob of the stove bent.
I've got a problem here. I just want to find out who qualifies for pension. Because I'm aware that people who qualify for pension are usually at the age of seventy. But when I go to those offices, I'm told that I need to put on pampas so that I can qualify for that grant.
Alright ma. Asazile sisongezo intun kasta kusele. Sisongezo yino.
Abanya bashtola, abanya basto.
Sisongezo or eight grant in age ne?
Oh, that's grant in age, increment, eh, in grant in age.
Yama agema, uma o social weka wakumba. Ukwe ipi white.
Twenty-two.
What, twenty-two?
Twenty-two, ukono social weka wala. To explain, n'entwaiye grant in age, kuti n'enza kanjan. Woba ifuni ma pampasbe tunak.
Owaspili nginyakpe.
Alright, u chief director uzai explain kuti n'enza kanjan.
Okay, owaspili benkweela kuti kosiya na teli undila. Kwenzea ama paraji. Nitela kuti, ni, nitela o businessmen. Ballete ama kampa. Ngaba ma kampa ni ekonala. Ngaba mshambwe ingan zeta bazugulbe bya sebenz. Manje abanya ba sebenzi, woba imsebenzi ai ko. Amen.
Secondly, my request is that, eh, as government, could you please, eh, ask companies to come and invest, and invest in Ulundi? If we had companies here in Ulundi, we wouldn't be having, eh, these people that they call paras. So it means most of the youth would be employed. Thank you very much.
Batshesha sabini leli, namizo, shoni pa, abashoni shwa.
They said we should no longer greet, I will respect that.
Oh, nyosapota ra kulumba nu.
I do support the bill very much.
Si albona, ichovu kulungula spelo nagulenda o.
We are thankful for the opportunity God has afforded us in this area.
Eh, asiso kela gu governmenti, eh, sela, si, sa, sesbataala.
What we are requesting from our government is that, eh, we are now old.
Kotwa sina maskills.
We have skills.
Ah, sa systemenza?
We were employed.
Asisa sebenz.
We are no longer employed.
Nyakabang kuti net dimension yenzoa, u kuti, abantabatala, basala bangenzilu utu.
I also think that sometimes this dementia is caused by the fact that elderly people would just sit idle and not do anything.
Social kavangin kinga, olanga bezana na zo, n'ezefemeli, n'ezabantwana, n'ezemindeni, n'ezamanepa, uzupamba nikand.
You'd end up thinking about all the problems that you, eh, you come across, could it, it could be family problems.
Asikana gu government is kungu.
What we are requesting from a government is a center.
Enda olas, aso kwenza konna imsebenzi esand.
A center where we could do handwork or craftwork.
Abatungayo, batunge.
Those who are machinists can sew.
Aba, abenzupshala benzupshala.
And those who work with beads can do so.
Aba enzi kachulo benzi kachulo.
And those who make shoes can also do so.
Tineschungayo, gakulu, ngani kalelaayo, guma school uniforms.
We as tailers, especially, I have a complaint when it comes to school uniforms.
Benneke gubekonistengoso, kuti ama uniform ayolandwa le, efomimi ama China in Newcastle.
There would be no need to go, eh, get school uniforms from Newcastle under a Chinese-owned, eh, company if we had our own center.
Lasts o fundisa konna, abanya bangawazi tu.
Where we could actually train and teach others who are not able, eh, to, to, to sew.
Yes, si, si akela gakulu, kulumene asbonelele ngisukongo, ne machine, ye industrial machine.
We are pleading with the government to assist us in terms of a center as well as, eh, industrial machines.
Lasts o chunga konna, all the uniforms.
Where we can, eh, eh, create all these uniforms.
No me ama spelela, no me ama poisa, no mama bulletproof.
It could be. It could be for, eh, eh, hospital staff, it could be for the police, or even bulletproof vests, eh, we would train each other there.
Eh, ogokutina, ogotin sela, woba, wonge lumsenzi, fanele suwenzee, obe equality.
Lastly, I'd like to say that, eh, we would have to do this job or this work.
Fane gubena ama quality controller.
Eh, in, in terms of quality standards, so we should have quality controllers.
Siso gwasino export umsebenzi, like njenga guma sports. E, e sports is say trusihamba all over the world.
So that would be able to export some of our pro- productions.
La oma uniforms wa ma sports, ngabe suwenzati na la.
Especially in the sports, eh, sector because the sports goes everywhere in the world. Such uniforms or, eh, kits, we would actually produce them here.
Ah, ne transport, this is a thing ah?
We would also need transport.
Eh, ogogo, ogogo, putumisumsebenz, o figure in time.
So that we could rush our production and it gets to its destination in time.
In time, okay. Nam, oh, esin insisa zonkenje, zase, zagusowing ama industrial machine, ama ironing pot.
All resources for sewing, it could be.
Cutting tables.
Cutting tables, cutting machines, ironing pots, irons.
Yeah.
I will stop on that for now. We would like the government to help us with that, thank you.
Nyosapotumbon.
We support the bill, thank you.
Mama?
Mama?
Uyabuzu, ma mkhengwa, umbanu.
Mama, baktalekama.
Okay.
Uma mpindi le shobete, eh, mbilane ewa twelve, Ulundi.
Engos. N'gabi ngalela bashonisha.
Greetings, honourable members.
Kamalame, obushle, ugama hayen thuli.
My name is Bule.
Engbesu kuti, ukbeka, nitelu kuzo kalisukpateka gabi.
Eh, I would like to, um, eh, say, eh, how I am quite feeling.
Mangabelkali viki, manga posisi boko itusday, ngatholuktingo. Oluti ena, eh, gune parliamente.
Eh.
Uktela galilanchon club, enegiyona, kuti okoko bakona bezela nomku.
During the beginning of the week, if I'm not mistaken, it was Monday somewhere, I received a call that said parliament was coming over and they are requesting that the lunchon club which I'm part of and the elderly people from it should be present.
Ikamale lanchon club, ifuguzenzele lanchon club.
The name of the lunchon club is Vuguzenzele Lunchon Club.
Ngase nyabazasako kuno mku, lukutine intenjeshi woy.
I then informed the elderly people that there was something like this.
Zela galakuti ngo eight xeni beseni ready, mina ngzofika senhamba ne kuambi, esu nta tinletela.
We, I then requested them that they should be ready at around eight in the morning. I will come with the taxi which would then transport them to here.
Minan half past seven desenlindi kuambi.
At half past seven, I was already waiting for the taxi.
Okoko besa besa itopen, ngo koratu eight.
The elderly people were already on their taxi stops, eh, at around quarter to eight.
Up until now, basa itopen.
Up until, as we speak right now, they are still waiting.
Byafona ipi mod.
They are calling, where is the vehicle?
Namimotangaga itoli, I'm still waiting.
Eh, I've also not seen the vehicle, I'm still waiting.
Mama bekshigutbasoshala, five hours itopen.
If it had been, if it had been said that they would spend about five hours in their taxi stops.
Benza, benza, prepare lu kujla, woba abantabatala, banu sugela, banu ipi pi, banu everything.
I would have prepared something for them to eat because these are elderly people, they have diabetes.
Sekze wafigala ngetikona, bielan emakaya, woba namisengezame lukfigala.
It got to a point where I told them to go back home.
What twenty la Ulundi?
And what twenty here at Ulundi.
Abanya babo, ngokutiba achandukuzala, sebeki belenge nyao, ngbona, ngi moto, ngbona sebengena, ngalema labange nae.
Some of, eh, them who, because they wanted to actually come here, they have used their own monies to get into taxis. I've just seen them.
Um, dalama utiko ye, ngo eight, se ambasenda, one etile, agafano mdomosha, ufika apifo. Ashala begezele, aga, 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 pela manja njenga abantabasha, uyalinda. Bangaki, labantu balindile pa. Abantabalindele la panabau seventeen. Bas, abanya ba fona, manje, ansa wazugulba, bati bazongta bak social worker, manje, kuti, gibenzintenga kaze ngens.
They say now they will report me to the social worker, I'm doing something very wrong to them.
Next time, nyakte las bashonipapa abantabatala, banambi le, basemkuakweli, basayo omoy.
Next time, I request that we respect elderly people, they are hungry, they are sitting on the road.
Faneleskolise ma, faneleskolise.
We should apologize.
Ukutikwenza gele nige transport. Abanya sebeze bafika, abayzame la, ngasbahay kekanjan, bazongena kuwiriske wakloko hay, kota sebeze bafika, beya mbela ngemaliza baba ngenazu. Alright, alright ma. Si virile, sitalukolo, koto masila ndelelu, ukutikwenza gele nige transport yabo. Ungahandi, sikwazukuti scheckish, nobango miste plamina, oka nyumbani lo suppose, ubenza le i transport ye kon. Asif tanti lo yontok, abantobatala, waxalo engabo. N'yakte la kuti la baba ikibelele, leo kuambi, beya mwelanda, banta ngabalanda, ayabu isale.
I would request that those who use their own money to get here, the taxi that was supposed to bring them here should.
En baboni le njenga manje, balago eight.
I've only seen about eight of them.
Bangbona, banyo, woba banyo, bangene basala, kuti njenga baboni le, bengena balago eight. Zufaneleke, ma, ma kaitwala, le eight u xanga nise, u, u ibeki kaleni, sizo bonu kuti, aba, ama, ama, ama officials etu, azusisa kanjan.
When we're done, you could just group your eight people and put them on the side, we'll see how our officials can assist.
Nakuge benzo kuluma ngaku.
This is what I actually came to speak on.
Sizotela la, u, umtsetolwenwenza, kuti, nispegelale, ngasoshala ngotini lumnyangweze mbilo.
We would request that the bill that we are discussing, eh, eh, discussing right now focuses, eh, especially on the issues of health.
Masilesla, pamalanchon club, no okoko, eh, si akjablelu, kutu social worker figa nawe nden, naga bill, naga tatu, naga ngagwia khamuk.
Eh, when we're sitting in these lunchon clubs with the elderly people, we get, eh, actually happy when we see the social workers who come. It could be two times or three times in a week, but they, they are always popping by.
Si akte la kuti, nambawa health, nisitalel kuti, bafagacheke, no maganyi, ma itoba bengenalu, bazosbonelo okoko la phalasuke sbashlanganseko.
We would also request that the same happens with people from the health department, even if it's once. Eh, if they could just come and see to the elderly people, where we would have them gathered.
Si akte la futu ti mabe ipelela, okoka, baba be pambi la, banga yenzola in, ngazektu okoko, shonele mapenji in.
We would also request that if they go to health institutions like hospitals and so on, eh, elderly people should not be made to queue because sometimes it could be said that an elderly person died whilst in the queue.
Si akte la ge futu bashonisha lapongo, wago onkeksisande nzein, man babelima la ma department, ngendele n'babela ngai, egenu ta isale lumnyangwa wa health.
Eh, we would also request, eh, eh, from you honourable members, because it's all in your hands, that when budgets are being done, eh, 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 could at least, eh, some increment be given to the department of health.
Lokungusho, woba, guma lanchon club esnavosnokwa, kabaha mbangaitu lo, wheelchairs abafa kama nabgin.
Eh, I'm saying this because in the lunchon clubs that we have, we have, eh, elderly people who use wheelchairs and they also have to use diapers.
Sinama case is la konna uhambu yegno mbilo, u, u, u koka fika zobe guguti, agana gugu zulambi le. Imalesi inigoza u TSD, agione kutisbanigeza ma food parcel, kutismapegeli, ngiskatibela.
Eh, sometimes you'd have an elderly person come to you and tell you that they have no food and they are hungry. The money that we receive from TSD is not for us to give to the elderly people food parcels, but it's actually for us to, eh, cook for them at the place we would have them.
Na ngoku koku yabi guguti ena, agana gugenzini, ngobima lu itatila wote nganga yama nabgin.
Eh, then you'd have an elderly, eh, eh, grandmother telling you that they have no food at, eh, eh, at the home because they had to use the money to buy diapers.
Ma uyagnompi, lunompi uyajen kutikainke, ngispegene nae, laswacholo konne kliniki, swachola ma nabgena, be mananegi, n'enza kasneke, lo okoko glenyang, ngalenyang asimneshesneke lo.
Eh, when you report that to the social workers, they'll tell you that, eh, the issue is at the clinics. When they, eh, receive these diapers, sometimes they are usually, eh, in a very small quantity. So they tell you that sometimes they'd give to this particular grandmother and not give to that one, and then they sort of like rotate them.
Maktiwa uyawatola agi, usuwa fona, uktunutoli peke lodwa, elna ma nabgena fifteen parat.
Should you be persistent and you end up, eh, actually, eh, receiving them, you could get one pack which only has about fifteen diapers in it.
Okoko, bahola, lo two thousand rand, bonli ingane zaabo, woba sebenz, nabazugul, agana okimali oktena ma nabgin.
Elderly people only receive, eh, this two hundred, eh, two thousand renz as their pension. They have to support their own children as well as their grandchildren because their, their own children are unemployed. Thus then, they do not have money to buy these diapers.
N'abong.
Thank you.
We are supporter ma of Orri, oru chi lokala kuti, we are hampisana nalesi, eh, stromelumted. Yevo ngihamsana nao.
Yes, I do support the bill.
Siabongaba.
Thank you.
Sondele baba.
What a day.
Ah, wasu, inkosama, na namshanch.
It's nice to be here. Kumnandi kubalapa?
It's nice to be here.
Nice to be here, Baba.
All greeted, ndabese ita.
N'gabi ngalela nonke, n'asinkosini, ngetindabese ita.
Na mtolela gakulu, kuti sentosa, mubamfishana, woba niinki, osa kwe tu sebekebekele.
You will have to forgive me, I'll be brief, because a number of things has been said by my colleagues.
Anisukubage individual.
Angeke nkulume, njongo monto ye etwa.
Ngiso kuluma.
Alright, kandungu Baba, utwaale, n'entwaiye itzwi nae, yenzoa, kukuba, abantu bayakofa, kutu sentosa mkuamo. So make, make sure, kinsa guguti, ayikofanga n'entwaiye ago, ela pamkuaku, engos.
La, eh, department mina, ngpegene nae, gakule shupa bata bataala, o agriculture.
Iyaka nyala ngapani kwaaku, eh, maya kofekanga iba mnyamanyan, so make sure, uba ayikofekanga, woba yenza ingebeze tu, sibehukungu, engos.
For me, the department that is abusing people is the department of agriculture.
Ebu tialenbe tu, la wa agriculture, sina lokungzo ksheesha. Gune farming, gune husbandry, gune crop raising, gune cultivation, gune thile ichi yongtabati, gune market gardening, kuzoba no agron, nomi.
La gu agriculture ge konna zone, k'elizinto, baba segasbalile.
Oksemkoga ge, esitela olapapesu, kuapa level, yo basa kuikram level.
The most important thing that we are asking, eh, from people at higher level since we at the, at the grassroots level.
Si tela izinjela, esinono, esincha, zoksebenza wa agriculture.
We are requesting for new ways or methods, eh, that we can use at the agricultural department.
Number three, resources.
Eh, we start to tell isincaza.
Woba ngapanda kwenzi isincaza, banta bataala, bayasukumese gakakulu.
Because without resources, elderly people get abused very much.
Kumbola, isel ngakafi ilale, likona manje, ku South Africa. Oguniinki, kwa kupeto abantyo abatala, enchabatini, enfuyeni, eksebenze n'ichabati, ku yoyonke n'entwaiye.
Remember, before the country, eh, became where it is today, eh, before, the land used to be worked by the elderly people in doing everything.
Bashe no ane ge ngapanda.
Why are they left behind?
Yina ako, uyasinjabulia konna munto mtaala, u kuti, uma ebugin sabat, ebugin fuyo yake, ebu yingati yake, la ichale konama vegetableake, itliziyo itikosolo.
When an elderly person looks at his garden, at his livestock, eh, at his vegetables, he becomes very happy.
Sita la agi, nationally, gubekonu, oka naiswa gwa bandu, abazu fundesa, abandu abatala, ngisinjela esincha, zogwenza yonke le desesibalile.
We therefore. Yeah, we therefore request that, eh, from the government, it should assist elderly people by providing them with people who can teach them with the new ways of planting.
Abandu abatala, si tela ogutiba kashwe, u fundisa bata basha, lama skills, aseshio.
We therefore also request that these elderly people who are knowledgeable should be employed to transfer the skills to the youth with regard to all these skills that have been mentioned.
Abandabatala, yo basabeshes patsi, baki, n'ayega, basheza, banyo babulawo, uklala, nogukula, woba ma prachesa katibe wenza, awasanagi way.
Now, what makes other, eh, elderly people to be sick and, you know, to die and to suffer from diseases? It is because they are inactive.
Resources for old people.
Fanele benenzisa, abantabatala.
Eh, umandewetu, uma ezipachetne funding, lagoma spalabetu, lababa setu ze kwe tu. Sikali deyopu, kuti, aga, a tu kupula le funding, u kuse tina locally, sisisa kana.
When the government is doing budget for the local municipality, we request that the government should increase this funding so that we at local level can benefit.
At the same time, oh, oglantelayo, si tela uhulmende, avesa banta bazu trainer, u kuse ba traine, abandabatala, konala, abantabatala. Ngoba, uhulmende, abantabatala, uba tata njenga, abantabasuka sixty, above sixty.
Now, since government takes elderly people as people who are sixty and above, we request that the government should provide or should make sure that it provides these elderly people with people who are going to train them.
Resources.
Isincaza?
Uhulmende, si tela gwaslo, entwia gwaslo kuti, abahan tiulaba bataala, ngoba kuwi agriculture, ilabe relaxa koda, ilapo, debuka konna, uwehla gwa mastresses. Abana wimjeni niabo, n'asimpakatin, resources.
Eh, isincaza ge, uhulumene is highly aware that when elderly people are involved in agricultural activities, that is where they get relaxed and their stress levels goes down. Thank you.
N'ngabi ngalele.
Greetings.
Baba inkos, usapoti le kanen, of Orri, oh, siabong. Ikama nginnozi posmelani.
I am nozi posmelani.
What twenty-two?
From what twenty-two?
Eh, iskalo sami, kosiya misinzima, n'chlezi, nisuripotanjalu. Eh, lapesala konna, sitala, esodela, eh, ma fona.
Eh, I've got.
Onganga apa, etuzoge zinju, isu malina ama zangene zinjin, bafiga bawati zasta, batoala, batiswi, bazospegela, lama zangene zinjin, ama zakrinala. Mpe tijinji naiko kuatu twaizonke, izinto, zaula phanga pani, befigi, bawati zasta, bati babuya, bafiga ngo two thousand, ngo twenty twenty-three, ngo channel six, bafiga bati babuya, baleta jeta, bama, basiletela. Impo opu, u shukela, ama foot, opu, tisukwata babuya, nama yasabebu, ma wunivula, sitalisfuni kia, sialale hole, ma wunivula, stati kia, sialale hole. Guma jibulieza, asikwazu, fasi ngenyao, sijunve, ma widi, u kuti ama zasubagu, ma sisi akte la, kwa yalungu, avangete, ubu la manje.
Yeah, where we stay, we stay at number four, eh, our houses are next to Idonga. Now, when the rain comes, this water gets into our houses. Now, the disaster management came, the only thing that they provided us was just food parcels. When it is about to rain, we always get worried because we have to ask for the kids to go and spend the night at the halls.
Umku lujuredo eighty-five years, ma wunivula, fana kame widi, nakati ngan, eskadi n'ina, ngalado la, ngalelo, ngatikto, otela, inkonge. Ingane za ilele pansi, itabu akesi, yavapasi, ama za itabu akesi, lezo tabo, fana kani, choke, ngasukulukuli, yana, ozi, tasa, ngani, ngani, ma za ilele pansi, wa itutuku, wetikijala, widi ngaji, wetikijala, widi. Guma njaba zasabebu, zobonalo, tole, sitalasisho njalo, ababa zasabebu, yama, zasibon.
Eh, we've got a serious problem here. We once experienced rainwear by my grandfather who was eighty-five years. Had to save the lives of my grandchildren or his grandchildren by taking them out through the window. We can't understand as to how did it happen that they did not get shocked from the wires that were, eh, touched or, eh, got into contact with water. But what worries us the most is that the disaster management has never come back up to today.
Zataj, mbe figire, kule, zaba ifigire, kusamzissi, nyakoli sakosama, ngo twenty-two, ma be ngbegega, woba mshabeni, sanzobanamas, nyapshellele, ma be ngbegega, nyakoli sakela, ma be konala, utu se kushola, kwe kului, woba mshabeni, boku intwebi, shwati gi, mshabeni, sangubeke, ngakweza, nyakoli sakosama, nyakoli saklo, woba nyasite, sanzobanamto, nyakoli sakilelo.
Eh, I am pleading with the officials. I know maybe I have revealed something that has been hidden, but I'm just asking for forgiveness if I have spoken something that I was not supposed to say in public. Thank you very much.
N'abonga ikulenza. Alright ma, usala kwe ipi i wati? What twenty-two? What twenty-two? Uma, uma xengwa, uyio cheku, kutu konna umuntuwa gwa maspala yini ndaba. Ifu konna, sizo mshanganisa nao, akchailu kuti, kantika, n'ubu yani, n'utizasta ma ndok. Woba utizastu yamazmosu ufoli shapansi, uka maspala, u nyukelenke, wambi epizu. Mar, umbono wako, nen ngakiyako, uraiti, sisa isukulisa lakon. Manje, uyakasa, oka nyakasa, kule ndosena yu, kuka gwa social development, kule bill.
I do support the bill.
Engosima.
Thank you.
N'ngabi ngalele, ikulu sam. N'ngabi ngalele ikulu sam.
Greetings, honourable members.
Eh, usposisomtalane, slala ra what twelve, lara si.
My name is Bosisomtalane who resides in what twelve at C-section?
Oh, ilu ngale CPF.
I'm also a member of the CPF.
Eh, alage, samalu CPF, siya severa, kota sinengi, nga, oguti, eh, sela, nama, kota, ama, astoli lu, takoma, lisitola, siya fuludiya. Eh, ekmini, impilo zetu, siya riska.
Let me start by saying, eh, we have a problem as, eh, CPF members because we work hand in hand with the police. Eh, but, eh, we should state this, that we do not benefit anything, eh, whereas we are risking our own lives in this work.
Eh, bestela, mshabeni, ngutimshabeni, yabasawa malu, CPF, na gubekonu ngana, thura, nama, woba o two thousandi, woba asalala, sipsuku, shabeni, okoko, bayasukumese ga, eh, tingegeti.
We would request from our government, eh, as members of the CPF, that we get some sort of a stipend. It could be something maybe like two thousand renz because sometimes when, eh, elderly people are being abused at night, we would be called in, eh, to come and assist.
Eh, siabizwa, nyangaitaga, minsolize, eh, konna, eswini, tuto koku, se tukwe, mshabeni, omakshelwa, mshabeni, umfana, uyapus, umfana, atuke, uko okolo yo, uko okashe umese, mshabeni, masibes tindile, bisesfika lapus kulumene, mshabeni, na.
We would be called, you'd find that maybe a grandmother would be insulted or abused by a neighbor who's under the influence of drugs. And when we are called, we go to that person, we have a discussion with them and we tell them, should they fail to disease from this particular behavior, we tell them then we would have to involve the police. It also happens that you may find that an elderly person got lost. And now, when we are trying to assist them, we would try to call the police and request a vehicle and you would be told that they do not have any vehicles. We now as the members of the CPF would have a vehicle so that the person could be taken to a place of safety. On the second of July, we were called into a certain homestead where there is a child in that family who uses drugs. The mother had called us because the child or that boy had actually sold everything in the house. In that setup, then the elderly people are abused. We would also request maybe even from the traditional leadership that if a child has sort of like overstayed, they will come at home. If a person is like thirty years old, they should no longer be at home. They should be given a piece of land where they can build their own homes because now they end up abusing the elderly people. We would also request from the traditional leadership that when people are given stents to build their homes, the communities should be involved and also they should avoid placing people in places where they are graves, where you find somebody is trying to build a home on top of graves and then that creates conflict within the community. We would also request that the police work properly in the sense that as CPF members, we get in trouble sometimes. I support the bill. It seems they liked the issue that you spoke of.
And in real terms, ECPF yenzum seven zumkulu.
We will take this matter up to Mr. Pekitela. So that there would be a stipend for volunteers. We should now give some responses, a summary of responses. We've taken quite a long time. Elderly people are now experiencing low sugar levels. We request that the elderly people remain seated. The officials will come and give you something because if you stand up, you might push each other at the door so they will come to you. Thank you very much, Chair. It is clear that we have a lot of problems, especially on the health issues. That is why the Chair has given me this opportunity. There are quite a lot of issues on the health department, but our government is trying to encapsulate them with the NHI bill. I would also request that we use the clinics that are around us because that's where the government sends the resources in terms of health. I would like, I would like to state that here in Ulundi, we are lucky because we have clinics that are working hand in hand with the NHI bill. Those clinics usually have more resources, sometimes more than the hospitals themselves. That is why you would find that you would be told to start at the clinic. The clinic would then refer you to a hospital. That is the reason for that. I would also request that even if you're not used to going to clinics, you should go and register there. They would give you a certain number that you can use. So even if you are at a different place, you would just produce that number. Then you would be able to get assistance and I'm also imploring you as our community to use such clinics. I did hear Mamduli speaking about the clinics. I'm also hopeful that the Department of Health would be sensitized to such an issue because you may find that some of the clinics do not have the diapers as they spoke about them. Thank you, Chair. Yes, that's because of transport. Please come to the front.
Kuchigwa ekten? Uzotet, uthu yafiki transport ndazitene, nobuya fana na baba ngalande.
Greetings. My name is Mchabeni Moses Butelezi. My complaint is if parliament is coming to the people, what was the reason that or why were the people of this province not informed? Because we have a lot of problems in this area of Ulundi. I will not. I will not state some of the problems here. You will look at it as our government, but you should fix this issue that when you are coming to the people, you should alert the people that you are coming. We have a lot of problems in Ulundi. It's even difficult to leave. The issue that brought me here is an issue of an injury on duty or at work. In nineteen ninety-two? We, I had a problem in nineteen ninety-two. I was injured at work. In nineteen ninety-three, I was fired from work and I have reported this issue. I remember a certain point in time where I reported the issue to a minister by the name of Stella Stau and also to a minister, Spoo, or the premier Spoon Debele. I was injured at work and most of the people that I worked with have already passed on. I now have a sickness that is with me for the rest of my life. I reported to Mainpower. Your problem can actually be solved. The honourable member next to me will try and assist you. We will also put you in contact with people who you can claim from in terms of this injury you had. Let me be a bit short.
All right, Baba. All right, Baba. So, sitela umekulapo sia izwa inke inke. Netinje, masniku onarebulu ende ungha hambi, sizo kunikeza in number. Abantu ababapaza misseke Ms7ni, batola izindo, ngelale yo, ikoni number laso itchekisa. Sibonu kutu, umundula kui constituents officer, akusize for kutu ufo ne, upekiselento, oyo ngelen kulumayu kulumayo. Because kuso ufo wa i information yago, ama ID and all, injelo uha ngelangayo kupi. Yakele nje, ungha yenzi ukuti, ibesasanga lale ninkenge yago, sasizwile.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I think the Chair has actually answered. We will try and find who is the representative of this constituency here at Ulundi and try and sort of link you with them so that you can be assisted. I do apologize for using siswati. I do believe siswati nezulu are a bit same, so to speak. What I'd like to clarify is that here on this table, we are members of parliament. When you voted in twenty nineteen, you voted for different parties that they should be represented in parliament. We hold the government or the department accountable as members of parliament.
Um7nu wetuge, uweza show, uso civil does her work. We hold the government or the department accountable as members of parliament. From now onwards, when Ussisivil and her team comes to the portfolio committee, we will raise some of the issues that were raised here. We will also take the other issues of service delivery. We've picked up the issue of water is a problem here. We will take it to the relevant portfolio committee of water and sanitation. Through different political parties that you voted for in twenty nineteen. Thank you. All right. Mamusivil, oh, the platform is yours. Alright, ma mousivil, oh, the platform is yours.
Okay. Mangibuli sa abantu abadala, bugogo nabumdamkulu, mulweni.
Firstly, let me greet the elderly people, the grandmothers and the grandfathers. Greetings.
Umamamvan, the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Social Development, the honourable members of the Portfolio Committee and members of parliament present here.
Usaloo e committee, ngokunjaloge nama lunga e committee akonala pana mshange.
Ingosi Mulife, thank you very much for the warm welcome.
Undabesita umlefe, siyabo ngaku lunko usamugel.
Allow me, Chairperson, to also acknowledge the very support and administrative teams from parliament.
Ngifunale legisladon, pindage ngibonge nama krembo akonage asus legalela avela ge e parame.
And appreciate the work that they continue to do and holding us accountable as a department of social development.
Sipindage no men umsebenzo wenza ayo, lapoge abenza istrinsake usoku tige siyapendula, njegomnyango ke wezintala gash.
I want to acknowledge the members of the older persons forum also present here as well as the various structures of our older persons coming from all areas of Kwazulu Natal.
Ngifunage futu kuti ngipindage ngibonge, ama lunga ama old age forums akonala, nababa nyega abakama ka gu nomage isi pi isintanga no, esu akonala Kwazulu Natal.
Chairperson, I would like to also acknowledge the teams from the National Department of Social Development, but I also want to say, I am today also accompanied by our Deputy Director General, umamama Pili Mchongo.
Ngikala kisaloo kuti ngipindage ngibonge, abasabenza bavela gulo mnyango wezintala gash, shleguzwe longe, ngipinda ngiveza uku tige namshange ngi, hambesana ke no, no segela.
Deputy Director General.
Deputy Director General, umama Ummchongo.
She is also accompanied by my counterpart in the province, umamaphesile Luthuli, and they are supported by other senior managers in the department.
Uhambesana ke nomo nyega woza kwe tu, umama Uluthuli, kandike basabenza na nabanyi abakonala pake esfunda zwe.
We also have a representative from the Office of the Premier.
Sinomele ge ee ee o, wesiliganu ngongo ngokunjaloo.
Umamapalala.
Memapalala.
I would like to express appreciation to the portfolio committee for having organized these public hearings and I'm sure all of us would agree that they are quite successful.
Ngikata ndage ukbonga le portfolio committee ngoko shela ge imshanga nefana nale, ngiatemba ge futi songe senga vuma, oganyesenga vumelana uku kuti lemshanga no ibe impumelale.
Noting that these, these opportunities are granting us engagement with the older persons, on the Older Persons Amendment Bill twenty twenty-two, which seeks to ensure that the rights, the dignity and the integrity of older persons are upheld, but more importantly, their protection and care.
Sipindage pegeke uku tige lo kuwenzu kuti gesu kwa zukuma na nabu, abadala mayela nanalo umtetos vivinyo, uktrinsake isa uku tige abavigelegile futi bayanage gele.
I have noted a number of areas that I really want to talk about that are linked to some sections of the bill.
Xenge ngabona ke i ndawana ezimbalwa, eziham, ezik, ezikumene nisika ba ezivelala paya, kulo umtetos vivinyo ngikata ndukulmanga zo.
I want to firstly start with the issue of the abuse of our older persons.
Ngifisage ala, alage ngota ba logo usugunyazwa, wala banduke asebeba dala emakai.
Section twenty-eight subsection seven of this bill.
Usection twenty-eight subsection seven, uwa o lomtetos vivinyo.
Covers all forms of abuse.
Uweza ge songe izinde la obangatwa umundu usugumezeka ngazo.
Additionally, in section twenty-five A of the bill, we have now strengthened the definition of abuse to ensure that it covers some of the new and emerging trends.
Peswa logoke lapaya ku section twenty-five A uwa o lomtetos vivinyo, siyesa lula ge ingazelo yoku usugumezeka, ukuze ge sibugbona galu kuti, iguazge uku mbosa, songe izindo izanganke na panzi kugu usugunyazwa.
For example, we have recently noted in that in KZN, there is a growing number of older persons who are abused, older persons who get killed as a result of dementia and Alzheimer's.
Sesi yesa bona ku kuti njenga la pesfunda nsa Kwazulu Natali, ku nezingage eli kupuka yo, lo ku bulawa, nohuma lukulinyazwa, nohuma lukusugunyazwa, guvanda abadala, nganage yizi, ezifana ge no dementia, no Alzheimer's.
And some of our older persons continue to be accused of witchcraft.
Kandike ku sakube kana manju, kutabanyi babantu betu asebeba dala ngogwemiaka, basasolwa, ngoku tagat.
And we have now covered some of the areas that would strengthen and enable our older persons to respond to such situations in section twenty-five A.
Lapaya ku section twenty-five A, siyesa vesa izinde la, abantu ke asebaba dala, abanga pegana ke nesimo ezifana nalesi egates kulmanga zo.
But I would also like to indicate that there is a special day, which is an international day called World Alzheimer's Day, which takes place on the twenty-first of September each year.
Ngifunage no kuusho kutige, mshaga twenty-one ku September, mi nyaga yonke, ku nosu kuge olu kujwa, umshaba wonke uktiwa ge i World Alzheimer's Day.
And the department honors this day and there are a number of commemorations that take place across the districts and as well as regionally.
Lomnyango ke uyalu, uyalu kupalulusu ku, besage kubakona izindo esenzua yungu, gaba esfunda, esfunda zwe ngokunjaloo, na uzu long.
There was a concern that was raised relating to the plight of older persons who cannot really live in the environments that they live in anymore. And to that effect, we have also inserted section twenty-five A and B, which speaks to the removal of an older person to a temporary safe care without a court order.
Uye guva konage, la kuwezwe konaisnginga zo kuti kuna banda batala bangasakwazu klala glizinda o, ababeklala gsona, kulo umtetu section twenty-five no A no B, siyakvesa uku tige umundu omdala olhulumezeka yo, usenga kwa zuku tige asuswe glionda o, ayobewa enda weni evigelegile, ngapandle ku kuti kuza kubekona umyalale wengandolo.
And today, I want to encourage our older persons to speak up when they feel that they are being abused because this legislation seeks to really ensure your protection and support.
Eh, kulo kuge namshange ngitanda kukuzela abandaba dala uku tige ba, velele ngapambili, oganyi ba kulu umanga uke ku.
Alright, alright, ma si zoleka logo, silungselela lesisi moso onakala kudala nila, ma simameleka logo Chief Director.
Let's give an ear to the Chief Director.
Now, in terms of older persons who find themselves abused, we are now offering intermediary services. You no longer go to court alone, but we ensure that there is someone to support you, to guide you before you go to court, but also you are given an opportunity of testifying in camera and speaking in your own language.
Eh, kulo kuge siyavesa uku tige, gu banda asebaba dala abazwa ku ba shugumezegile, se kukona ke no kuti sibanigeza e intermediary service la, kubakona umundu ozogneda, ngapamgo kuba uzio fikenga ndolo akusize uku tige zuhamba nganjani, umusufigile ngangandolo ku kona futino kuti, unga kwa zuku tuetule ufagazi, use kunjini, elivalalegile unge kopagati guabantu nganjini.
There was also a concern around the roles that are not fully played by the different stakeholders that take responsibility for the implementation of this legislation. And I want to indicate that we have specifically outlined the roles and responsibilities of different stakeholders and government departments.
Uye wavelage futu kutige, kulo lulo, kulo umtetos vivinyo, ku nezintagas ga hulmeni, ezigenzi okfunale ngabesa wenza, kota sesi, tando kukvesa uku tige, kulo umtetos vivinyo, sigfagile uku tii, lonalupu kushaga nohume wupumnyango ozogwenzani, ukuze ge ukuazumtetu kobe uye pambili.
These roles and responsibilities are clearly articulated and will also form part of the regulations that are going to support the effective implementation of this bill.
Lemisebenzige, nezinyatelo, ezibegele wele minyango, eya shuka shuke neziyatatri swakulo umtetos vivinyo, logo ogzo wenza ke, uku tiku, umtetos vivinyo ube impumelale.
Linked to this is a very comprehensive integrated implementation plan that will assist us in terms of making sure that we plan together as various government departments and that we deliver services in a comprehensive and coordinated way.
Eh, uku hamsana ke na lomtetos vivinyo, usaloo luka hulmeni, ozo uktrinsake isa uku tiku minyango kuka hulmeni, isabenza ngokbambisa na futi ge i ku trino wenza uku kuti, songe izinziza nama services atingage kubantu ayawazi uku kuti ahangesu.
And to this effect, we will ensure the training and reorientation of all the key stakeholders.
Kulo kuge siya uktrinsake isa ukakayshwa, no ku fundiso, guabobonge abatindega yo, kule minyango eya shuka shuke.
We have commenced such opportunities and initiatives with the Department of Justice where we're working on the process of making sure that abuse cases go successfully through the justice system.
Sesi kalile logo lapaya e minyangweni wezo blunge iswa, lapesa zamakontrinsake isuku tige, ama dala ama ilanano kusugumezeka, ayajula ezengandolo, ezengandolo zwezwe.
They are also working with the department in making sure that our minister establishes the abuse register, which is already in place, and they need to support us in making sure that it really, you know, exists and that it is in use.
Kutoake, basabenza sanage, no ngongo sho wetu, kulo mnyango wetu, uku tige kwakiwe i register nohunge umulu oza opalisa, bonge bandu abatatwa njenga bahlugumezi, futi ge besa unngo shenale minyango etindega yo, ibazame uku tige le li register dia sabenza imbele.
So all perpetrators will have to be enlisted in that register so that they should not be found in the space of older persons or know work with older persons.
Bonge ke laba abaza otholakalebe na manjala okusugmeza, banda asebekulile ngogwemiaka, okfunale bapalo kulo ngulu, besa trinsake iswa futu kuti agwenzeki, bapinda batolakalebe shala, oganyi basabenza endaweni enabantu asebaba dala.
Chairperson, you requested me to talk about the granting aid. I know that it falls within the SASSA portfolio, but I want to indicate that a granting aid is a payment from government of South Africa through SASSA as an agency of the Department of Social Development.
Slalo, uyewa tingu pindage, uyewa ngaluku tingu kulumela paya ngalo granting aid, o welage lapaya wa SASSA ngifiso, lokatrisanya uku tige, upayment, ugranting aid lona, isnapesa, ngesitisnapesa los ngatige, i grant enigezwa abantu balapa e South Africa, ikamgalapa ya kasaasa, osebenza sanage, lomnyango lo wezintala gash.
This grant is paid to grant recipients who are unable to care for themselves.
Le grantige inigezwa oganyi ge iholelwa ge labo aba vele, aba hola le male gotage benga kwa zhi, uku zinage kela bona koboluabo.
This enables them to pay someone to take care of them on a full-time basis.
Logo ya ikbavumelé, uku tibakwa zuku tiba kache umundu ozo sabenza, uku nagage labona, nzu ku song.
And the current value of the granting aid is five hundred and ten rand per month as of the first of April twenty twenty-three.
Usuage ngogo, April ka twenty twenty-three, imalia kona ibeguela paya ku, five hundred and ten, ngenyang.
There was also a concern relating to the long queues that our older persons find themselves, you know, having to be subjected to. And I just want to advise that there are other options of older persons that older persons can utilize to receive their grants.
Uye wapake neskalo futu uku tige, abandaba dala bana kuyitola, sebeba beola inabate, benfisuku vesa uku tis konesinyinzele, abandaba dala banga isabenza isa, ukuze ge bawa zhi ukthola imbeshe niabo.
And this the department has considered as a result of making sure that you are protected and well cared for.
Eh, umnyango ke uyewa pegele, lezi zinzelo ngokusamtrinsake isuku tige nivigelegile, futi ge ni na, niya nage leleka.
And, and those are, for example, the use of post bank, the banks of your own choice so that you can be able to go either to the supermarkets, the big supermarkets to get your grant at your own time, not at the time when everybody else is queuing for their grants.
Kufaga uku sejenzi swakwe endawa, ezifana no post bank, oganyi uku sejenzi swakumunda sabenza siye i bankilake, oganyi uku ya ezitolo, logo ngashuku tige umundu unalo i tuba luku kuti, ayeh ukyohola imbeshe niye kengalesu skati, esithanda uyena anga ngalulusuku kutwale wongumundu.
What I also appreciate is that our older persons in the province are well organized in terms of them being attached to structures and I want to encourage our older persons forum to make sure that they work together with these structures. But I also want to say, we do have the National Development Agency which can assist you in terms of some of the trainings that you indicated you would like to have. And what I deem very important is the one on technology so that we move with you.
Sipanda ke no ku bonga, no, 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 ukpamisa ukchabala uku tige, uyewa onakala ku tabantu aba kulile, ba glenda o, ba zi, ba, 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 nama groups, abasabenza nao, singa tanda futu kutige i forum ya abandaba dala glenda o, izame imbele uku tige isabenza ne, na, 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 nama groups, kandike futi ku kona nezintelo, zokakayshwa ezibegewe njengo bagaye wavelala paya uku tige, okfunale kpegwe i training mayela nage for IR.
And that can also include the concerns around the indigenous policy.
Gonge logo ngaze kfageke indo ema ilana, i kuhambe kufige na lapaya kui indigenous policy.
Now, I also want to indicate that the president has implored upon us as various government departments to implement the district development model.
Kuntanda uku shofutu kuti mengamelu uyewa stela ke njenga basabenza be minyango, uku tige asenzes trinsake uku tige ku implementwa oganyi ku fawa msebenzini i district development plan.
I want to indicate that in KZN, you do have your war rooms across all the wars and your war councillors are available to lead these discussions within those war rooms. But it's not only war councillors, it's various government departments. And I want to also request that all these other issues that are impacting on various other government departments should also be taken to the war rooms because I have noted that you are fully aware of the existence of these war rooms.
Ngitanda kukvesa ke uku tis sektatri uku tila pwa Zulu Natali, guna ma war rooms, trisha ke kuza songe izika bazayo, siyata ndage uku tifuti ama kanzela asabenza na nabantu, siyafisa futi no kuti ezinye izinkinga, ezengasa zibe konempagatini, zehame nazosyobi wa guo la ma war rooms, ngoba sektatri uku tige ninalo uluazwa o.
Lastly, Chairperson, I want to touch on something that I know is very close to our older persons, the relationship that they have with the young people.
Eh, kudo trinasaloo, ngelage uku tinda indo ge engaze uku tige, isondeleka kulu ku banda batala, ika kuligazi ke maspeka ubilwane, abandaba dala, abanabo, nalabage abasebanan.
Because they truly love their grandchildren.
Ngoba ke baba tanda kulu abazukulubaba.
But they also find themselves being abused by these young people.
Kota ke bapinda basitole futi be shugunyazwa yiboba nalabantu abasebanan.
We now have noted that there have been concerns also elevated around the high crime rates.
Sesi yesa bona uku tige ku kona ke uku nga, pateki gashle, ika kuligazi ke makpegwa izenga lobke bengu, elipenzuka kulu.
And mainly linked to the young people.
Eh, uku tiu makpegwa kutolakala kuti li hambesana kulu nalabantu abasebanan.
Some of these issues we understand that they do because they are idling and they do not, they are in fact unemployed and do not have income.
Siya konda uku tis ezinye zalazi nginga zibangwa uku tige abandabanani, o, oganyi inja, aysebenzi, futi ge ayiko inzelage abanga zipelisanga ayo.
So we had a discussion with the Deputy Director General and we agree that there is need for us to facilitate the initiation of programs that would be targeting our young people in the province, but also to make sure that where those programs are existing, they must be strengthened and such initiatives should also be supported and where there's implementation, it must also be effectively monitored and evaluated.
Siyesa kulmesana ke note Deputy Director, sabono kutige, okfunale kube kona izinzelo, ezisa oletwa, uzisonge netla, ezindawenla, kona kona kungatatwa kona inja isabenza, besa kutige lapo ezivelisi kona lezintelo, okfuna trinsake iswa uku tis ya sabenza, besa ku pegwa ku katwa futi no kusabenza wazo, kudo lapo ezigeziko na izinzelo ezifana nalesu.
Finally, let me share the number that people can use in terms of making contacts with the National Youth Development Agency.
Eh, kutrini ngalage ukipa inombo lo abantu abanga isabenza isa, mabefna ke ukuma na the National Youth Agency, Development Agency.
O eight hundred.
O eight hundred.
Seven two, seven two, seven two.
Seven two, seven two, seven two.
Zero eight zero zero.
Zero eight zero zero.
Seven two, seven two, seven two.
Seven two, seven two, seven two.
Eh, lastly, I want to just say, there are a lot of concerns that came about as well relating to infrastructure, the availability of places where our older persons can go and do activities and so forth.
Woku, koinanga, tanda ju kuvezo, ukutige, uye wavela lapu, ukutige, ku ne eh, nezinkinga, eziningi, umaguzuwage, eh, twenisfana ge, nezinda o, nama izikuungo la, abanda abadala, abangaya konan, bayo wenzage, imgabe, msebenzia, abo, oganyo kuze vota vota.
But also relating to the residential care facilities and section eighteen A of this bill speaks specifically to issues of residential care facilities, but also issues that impact on eh structures for older persons.
Uh, section eighteen A, ukulumage eh, ngama residential care facilities, ndawo ge, omgashala, gwoye, nokpatwage, wabantu asebekulile.
And eh, there is also a policy that we have just finalized as a Department of Social Development, which is called Special Housing Policy.
Gulo umteto, espetta ku, wenza, njenge, njengo mi nyango, wezozontlalagali, okthwage specialized housing policy.
Which both the Minister of Social Development and the Minister of Human Settlements take responsibility for.
Loku okthwage, ungongo sho, wezintlalagali, ngoknjalo, no, lo, uklaliswage, wabantu, ibona, abapakena, na lo, umteto.
To ensure the compliance of facilities with the norms and standards.
Uktrinsagi sa ukutige, lezi zikuongo, sihambesana ge, nama zese zinke, ni elfanele, ngogo umteto.
And it is based within the risk oversight and eh integrated management eh unit.
Loku ge ku hamzana nokwepewa ge, we risk oversight, ngoknjalo, ne integrated management unit.
And this policy would assist us in terms of dealing with some of those issues. It's a process that is still going on and eh, there is continued interaction between the department and the provinces in this regard. So we hope that it will bring, bring some improvements.
Umteto ge, uyoseza ge, wezinye zezinkinga, ezvelela, uwi, uwi indo ge, esakubege, guzo kobe ga futi, gubekonukulmisana, paratgomi nyango, ngoknjalo, nezfuunda, siya temba ge, ukutu, uyoslegelela, ukutilishana, nezinye, zezinkinga, ezvelilela.
Chairperson, let me take this opportunity to thank you and eh appreciate eh the work that you do with eh the entire team from Parliament. Thank you very much.
Slalo, ma ngitatalelituba, ngipindage, ngi nome, umsabenzowenzaayo, ngoknjalo, nekwe, o kamga nalule, eh, Parliament, siya bongakulu.
I trust that I have been able to respond to the bulk of the issues that were raised here this morning. Thank you.
Ngetemba, ukutige, senpindule, gu, gukuni, ngi, ogie wapagani, iswa namshanja, kseni, ya bong.
Thank you. Siya bongak, siya bongak, Chief Director. Masita lenko, ukungo, basi ekvaleni, meeting yetu, umdu oli chantriziyo, kokuzo sbulela, songe apa, inlini. Si ke si pumsi, ngosi yetu, isamkeleka, mnandi kache, umdu oli chantriziyo, maka pahamise, nje zantla, imai kize, ku ya sbuleli.
Ashtoleke, umundu, inja, oziswa, ukutia ngofala, umshanga no, umshandasu.
Na ngu baba, baba umfundisipa, isanga pambilat. Lomzuzu, utata, isanga pambili, mandi cho ebala, indo ba, sakumba, sakumtalela UMC, Social Development, ma munonjasha kosa, simonge indo ba ekupe itemyo, ngke, kokuesmili, second taste like KZN, i social workers, puma kanga ngoko, indo ge, engabileyo, especially on Sunday. Siya buleli, nenzenjena, siete siyofika, echozini, nipume ngobuninzi bele. Kuwe getat, hamhamtui.
Sanbonani? Eh, lelesin tanda ngayo, eh, nazin abashlias. Hallelujah! Kulungulumulhe, songe siya mtanda. Eh, ngifisukutu, hambesana le, omuek, okutisbonis mangalise, esitleka kulu namshanja. Jenga, njengbonisi, i indela, enteleka kulu, ukutu, jenga, banda abadala, ngilai Parliament, namshanja. Ngifisa, ukutu, ufunde lapaya, enga tini. Eh, ama karatia five, karatia five, uma nga bususekaayo. Opela, lezi smameze, loska Jesu. Ismeze, loska Jesu, eh, siti. Eh, nibe no tando, lo wazi sana. Ningabi nomona, nibe je no tando, lo wazi sana. Loti nomu bono, mu nyumshobuti, ngabo ni kuku. Hallelujah! Kukono bo solapa, otma yopela, ngatisebushwa penutie, ekota buhle. Kukono bo solapa, obono, ptolega kache, utwazwa, umshebantu. Hallelujah! Umthandenge, umthandenge. Uma usufunda ge, lapana ku vez, fifteen, eti, anibal lumana. Ni lumana, kotun, apelena, ngaketa. Ni sana, ni sana, kotu, amkete, eti. Engani amtinga, sasu somtinga, usomtinga, umsiswa, akolo. Usofu, umsiso, kolo, umtulo, lonwena, ekatu, mluu, usumketile. Yenindaba, nthande, ni ukutu, nibe nomona, omunye, umfisela, kumbulala. Yenindaba, wena, uma, umbugalo, umtuo, umfisela, kuthanga, binuto. Fisela, apela, leli kuku, ngankulungulu, sinasama kuku. Hallelujah! Utu hova, umshé, utu Jesu Christu, ni thandane, nasi sana, nikonsana. Niya keta, niya keta.
Fundisie, sunyukela, ngentha baba, siya kontu, kuti lisonti, namshanja. Eh, sbulelenje, eh, banga lumana kakulu, futi banga janimbela, baketani, sbulele baba, nje, hamhamtui. Kotwa ge, pango bakbesa, umfundis, utwa, guna bantu, pa, abanga tolanga, izindo, sabo ipasile, sabo zyesa, mabaxalele, kwe kalalinga, pa, ekunene, ukthwa, bato langa, mabese, ngapa, sodati, bakluke, and then i efika ipasile, aboisenji, le, fundis, kobo, sbulelanje.
Asifale na melo, simonge, ungulungulu, tiko, onamalila, osthandile, uzubela, konasi, hambakale, siya makaya. Siya kolisa, nawabanyaba zanga, be pumelele, asifala melo. Kulungulu, weto, namalila, ngke, sikthandile, sivuka, ekseni, namanjee, sukzakwa, fikalele, hola. Ungulungulu, sekngomaayo, ungulungulu, no tando, ungulungulu, tozi sayo, ungulungulu, yalayo, ungulungulu, sfundisayo. Sifundisega, baba, si sizzotugana, nase makaya, tinkinga, tikona, kota wena, ube, umlauwa, ditinkinga. Kosu Jesu Christu, kuze, ube namanjee, hallelujah, hallelujah, amen.
Amen! Batula bantu, inlini, ameni! Masia, ambe ngokolo, sikululani, kakushé, siya buleli.